Channel 36 anymore after this budget year. Would that mean that the cable companies would be upset because we let that channel 36 go back to them? Or would they be happy? And if they did get that channel, what would they do with it?
Well, they would probably be very happy. And they would probably take that channel and use it for commercial purposes. They could lease that channel for millions of dollars and make money.
So basically, the city of Los Angeles is in a position of doing two things. One, providing public access information through Channel 36 as they have been for years. And if we abandon that responsibility, then the private industry would go ahead and gobble up that channel and probably not use it for that and end up using it to make money.
That's correct.
Having come from the cable industry and saying public access is a big deal, District 11 Councilmember Bill Rosendahl poses a series of questions to staff.
Public access is a big deal. How do you see it happening after the end of the year?
Well, the Board of Information Technology Commissioners, the Municipal Access Policy Board has issued its report. We've sent it on to council as well. Information Technology is in support of the findings, recommendations in that report. Pursuant to that report, one of the options that we're supporting is that the cities support and maintain four interconnected city channels.
Please hold my time so I can hear his answers. Take my time, thank you.
Four interconnected city channels. One public access channel is to be combined with the current Channel 36 for purposes of allowing the city to continue allowing for those two government channels, just so that we can put into place the continuation of Channel 35 as it now exists. And to have a billboard channel on the other, for the other channel, the second government channel. And also to have an educational channel that would be operated by another entity, probably UCLA, UCTV. And we intend to send this report on to council shortly through ITGS.
How about sending it out to the public, putting it on your website, let the public access producers see it? You know, I had 700 public access producers who produced 3,500 shows when I was a cable guy, okay? Are we going to create a studio, put the equipment in, give them access to a location? What about the public? There's about, I would say, 2,000 public access producers out there. What strategy do you have in place to give them a place to go and do their shows?
Thank you. We've actually, the Information Technology Agency has actually had all of this information about the changes in the laws for the last two years on our website. I know I manage and help maintain that website. And we've also provided information on a weekly, daily basis, the phone-in calls. We get many of the access producers to call us. In terms of what it is that we're proposing, if the city wants to make a determination, let's say the city, the city council, the mayor wants to make a determination that it should fund a public access studio, which are now controlled by Time Warner mainly, right? And will cease to exist on January 1st, 2009 because of the changes in the law, then that funding, which ITA just can't find the monies for at this particular time, needs to be approved by the council for us to look for those monies at that time. And the mayor as well, by the way.
Thank you. With that, let's go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
That is approved. And joining us now by phone is District 11 Councilmember Bill Rosendahl. Mr. Rosendahl, welcome to Council Week in Review.
Thank you, Jack, for having me on.
The topic, of course, the possibility of the Channel 36 might disappear. Explain for our viewers what Channel 36 provides, and of course, because 36 is our sister station, the differences between channels 35 and 36.
Well, first of all, I hope 36 never does disappear. 36 is a community channel, and it can be also a public access channel if we're able to make it happen right. Channel 35 is the government access channel. Channel 36 is a community access channel. So the goal is to keep both channels, 35 and 36. And also frankly, to get AT&amp;T, as it's now creating video customers, that they create a channel 35 and 36. And so far, they've been stonewalling the city. We interconnected those channels when I was in the cable business so that people could turn to that block of channels. Start with Fox News, if you like, on 32. Look at the financial things on Channel 33. You know, turn to MSNBC on 34. Turn to our government channel on 35, our community access on 36, and CNN on 37. A block of news and public affairs programming, so that it's simple and easy for the viewers to flip through those channels. So first of all, I'm upset that AT&amp;T is getting customers and they are not doing the right thing. I hope they do, and we should sue them if they don't. Now, back to your basic question about Channel 36. 36 is a community channel. What's being impacted dramatically is thanks to the state legislature and the governor and everybody in Sacramento, they turned around and they went ahead and cut a deal with the telecoms, saying, "Look, you don't have to go get a franchise anymore. We'll let you get a blanket statewide franchise so you can go into competition with the cable." And the logic they used, which was good on one level, customers need choice. Let them have a choice between an AT&amp;T signal, a Verizon signal, or their local cable provider. Maybe there'll be then competition in pricing. Maybe there'll be competition in customer service. But what they basically did by that action was take away the franchises that the city has with the cable operators and all the other cities and the counties have with cable operators. So what happened was the cable operators no longer accountable to the local governments. If you have a customer complaint, where do you go? You've got to go to Sacramento. The second thing they did was kill public access for all practical purposes. You know, public access used to be a requirement of having a franchise in a city. PEG access, public education and government access. I know, I was in the cable business for 22 years, and I was a believer in public access. In fact, when I ran Century Cable, and before that Westinghouse Broadcasting and Cable, and then Adelphia Cable, I had 700 active producers creating 3,500 shows.
Well, you've also had a lot of years to think about this, and that's why you're such an expert on this topic.
Well, you know, there's no experts anymore because we were taking away our ability to even handle it. Now all there is is a 1% franchise fee that says for capital dollars, which is absurd. You need it for programming dollars. You need a couple of studios that people can get into. It basically took away the responsibility of be it the cable operator or the new vendor, the AT&amp;Ts and the Verizons, from really doing meaningful public access. I always had the position frankly, that the people own the airwaves. People get a right to have it at certain periods within the mix-up because the right-of-ways are owned by the public and the cities. And that a public access was an electronic soapbox, and it was a First Amendment right.
Well, one of the things that I'm sure the viewers of this program are thinking, "Wait a minute, over 100 cable channels available on most cable systems, and this starting next February with the high-def new rules that come in, having a single channel for public access just doesn't seem like much to ask."
It isn't much to ask. It's a money number. Everybody wants to increase profits. And for both the cable casters in their minds and these new folks coming in, the telecoms, it's an expense that they didn't want to deal with. I used to use the argument, by the way, internally in the cable industry when I was an executive in it, that it was a marketing tool, that you had unique and special product on cable that you didn't get on broadcast, so people should get cable to see some of these great shows that have value. And also some of the funny shows. And also in LA, of all places, an opportunity for people to be discovered and involved. It was a fun channel. I used to keep it when I was Century Cable on Channel 3, which was between 2 and 4, a great location. But then the Adelphia's people came along and they sold Channel 3 for a million bucks to another group, okay? And we were kicked up to Channel 77 with public access. It was still an analog channel, but I wasn't happy at all because it's all about profit. So when the telecoms convinced the legislature and the governor that competition is great, let us get in quickly, we don't want to go through this franchising process, the cable companies said, "Me too, me too, me too." So they made a new law that basically took away the public access facilities, staffs, and even channels, but said you get a 1% fee that can be used for public access, which, you know, isn't clear what that means. So the two things I'd like to see happen in LA City is number one, everybody should step to the plate and keep Channel 36 going. We've got to find ways to keep it going, keep it funded. Two, that we use parts of Channel 36 to allow public access product to appear on that channel so that public access has the viewership. And three, make the telecoms have Channel 35 and 36 common channels, simple and easy for the customer to flip through all of those other channels that are there that have to do with news and public affairs programming. But we don't have the power to do it. I have to put a goodwill, I'm sure my colleagues are sympathetic to me, but there is no law that gives me the strength to do anything.
Well, you are probably the greatest public champion of public access anywhere around here, and certainly you have the credentials for it. Every time you get a chance, you say public access is a very, very big deal. Does Sacramento think it's a big deal?
No. No, they don't. They don't care about it. That's why they let it go by the boards.
So we are in real jeopardy, is what you're saying. This is an urgency that we could lose this public access across the city of Los Angeles.
Correct. I don't even know how to stop it, to be candid to your viewers and listeners right this very moment. We don't have the clout to stop it.
Would that new law that created the video opportunities for the telecoms, would that have to be rescinded?
Well, they'd have to certainly do a piece of legislation to modify it up there in Sacramento. Look, you've got a governor that vetoed a third of the legislation because he was upset they couldn't come to a budget. I mean, you know, Sacramento has a lot of dysfunctional aspects to it. I don't see any of them seeing it as a priority on their radar screen, public access. I always did. I was passionate about it when I was in the cable business, and I'm still passionate about it now. When we stand up on our council floor, I know that Channel 35 is in 750,000 cable homes, not these new ones coming on, and that people could watch it if they wanted to. I'm told we have some 50,000 avid viewers and listeners. I get comments every day on the street from people saying, "Oh, I saw you on the council floor." You know, people need to be connected with their government. It's a healthy connection, government access. And so same with community access, which is Channel 36. And in my opinion, the same with public access.
You sit on the Budget Committee, of course.
Yes, I do.
Is there a way in this horrible budget year coming up that the city could continue to fund it?
Channel 36 is your question on that one. We found a way to keep it going for this present fiscal year, where we were in just as bad shape as we're going to be when we go through the budget process for the next fiscal year. So I will be committed to see if we can find a way to do it, but I can't make any guarantees. When I hear that we might have to lay off people who work in the parks, or people who work in the libraries, or not have enough money for intervention programs, I begin to wonder what our priorities should be and could be. I'm very worried about our city budget, our state budget, and I dare say the federal budget.
Do you think there's a place for the internet and all of this as an outlet for public access producers?
I think it is a definite outlet for it. People who are internet savvy, it's usually people who are under 50, who really live on it kind of thing. And if they're under 40 even more so, or 30, I think the senior citizen types, the type who turn on Channel 35, they really haven't gotten that close to it. You know, I'm a 63-year-old. I'm close enough to it that I can push buttons around and move it and type a few letters and numbers. But I know a lot of people aren't able to do that. So it is a great, great mechanism for those who've grown up with the new technology that make it an empowered part of their life. I see a lot of young people running around with iPhones and with BlackBerrys, and you know, they're all connected on that aspect as well as their computers at home. In fact, many of them have no more, you know, landlines, it's just cell phones, which also serve, you know, not as just a cellphone, but a computer and a, you know, like I just mentioned. So there are lots of people, millions of people, who do live off of the internet, but not everybody.
In the minute or so we have left, I'm sure there are some people who've never seen public access. What kinds of things would we be missing if it went away?
Well, in my opinion, you miss a lot of community-based programming that people who are participating in want to see. You see a lot of news and talk shows from people who have points of views that never get on the mainstream television. You have good people who do books and people who do things that are comical and enjoyable just to watch. The creative talent that we have in Los Angeles that doesn't get on a mainstream cable channel or a mainstream broadcast signal are going to disappear. They won't have a chance for an outlet. And it's not good for community, it's not good for the democracy, to have less free expression, less electronic soapboard, and more importantly, you know, less First Amendment rights.
Just to be clear, finally, so everybody understands, what happens on New Year's Day, January 1st, 2009, if nothing is done to address this issue?
Well, the plug is going to be pulled on a lot of public access local channels in cable systems. You don't have them on your AT&amp;T new lineup or your Verizon, other than maybe on some Barca channels that are hard to get to. You're going to lose some quality programming that people enjoyed watching on local channels. And for sure, you're not going to see any regional or interconnected or statewide channels. It'll be a tremendous loss.
District 11 Councilmember Bill Rosendahl, thanks so much for joining us. To explain all this on Council Week in Review.
It's my pleasure, Jack, and thank you to your listeners and viewers who watch Channel 35.
Since this entire situation rests in the hands of the people up in Sacramento, if you feel passionately about this issue and want to make your feelings heard, this would be a good time to contact your representatives in Sacramento. LA City View is the government access cable channel for the city of Los Angeles, featuring live coverage of city council meetings and programming about city department services and events. And you can watch city council meetings live or view past meetings by going to the city's website at lacity.org and follow the instructions for video on demand. And we invite you to address the Los Angeles City Council on any item on the council agenda, as well as during public comment. You may come downtown to City Hall or go to the Van Nuys City Hall and participate via video teleconferencing. Remember, you can watch all Los Angeles City Council meetings live in their entirety on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays, beginning at 10 a.m. On Sundays, you can watch the replay of all the week's meetings, also beginning at 10 a.m. Council Week in Review can be seen Monday through Friday at 9:30 a.m. and 6:30 p.m., and on Sundays at 9:30 a.m. Well, that concludes our program for the week ending October 17th, 2008. On behalf of Robert Brown and everyone here at Channel 35, I'm Jack Popejoy. Thank you for watching, and please join us for the next Council Week in Review.
Good morning, Los Angeles, and welcome to the City Council meeting for Wednesday, October 22, 2008. We're in the John Farrow Council Chamber here in City Hall, Room 340. We meet every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday here at 10:00 a.m. I want to thank the members of the City Council who are here on time. We have 10 members now. I want to welcome our viewers on Channel 35 and those of you who are here with us in council chambers. Council President Eric Garcetti, and I'm joined by my colleagues, Council Members Richard Alakon, Tony Cardenas, Councilwoman Janice Hahn, Councilmember Jose Wezar, Jan Perry, Councilmember Bill Rosendahl, Greg Smith, Councilmember Jack Weiss, and Councilmember Dennis Ein. We are still expecting Councilmember Labange, Councilmember Reyes, and Councilmember Wesson. They'll make their way down. Ms. Gruel and Mr. Parks are excused today. We are also available online at lacity.org, where we have live webcasts of our council meetings and archived footage of our past council meetings. There's also a wealth of information there, including our City Council agendas, which you can also pick up in person here in City Hall, and any of our committee meetings, as well as city services to improve the quality of your life here in Los Angeles. Finally, if you're not close to a computer or television, you can always use your telephone and call council phone at 213-621-CITY and listen to the audio proceedings of our council or committee meetings. With that, Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Alakon, Cardenas, Gruel, Hahn, Wezar, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Weiss, Wesson, Zine, Garcetti, 10 members present, and a quorum, Mr. President.
All right, first order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Weiss moves, Mr. Smith seconds. Without objection, those will be approved. Next order of business.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Wezar moves, and Mr. Cardenas seconds. Without objection, those will be approved, too. If we can run through the agenda, please.
Before beginning of the regular agenda, Mr. President, there's a request to continue several items. Item number 17, there is a request to continue that matter to November 5.
Is there any objection to continuing item 17, colleagues, to the 5th of November? Seeing no objection, so ordered. Next item, please.
And there's also a request to continue items 28 and 29 for one week, and that would be October 29.
Okay, without objection.
Mr. President?
Yes, Ms. Wezar?
Can we also continue number 26, please?
Yep, we got that one quick sec. October, sorry, October 29 for items 28, 29, without objection. And when did you want to continue 26 to?
26, yes.
No, but when, until?
Till one week, one week.
One week, okay, that would be to the 29th, without objection, as well. We will continue item 26. Next items.
On the regular agenda, items noticed for public hearings, items 1 through 6 are street lining district ordinances, and I believe 12 council members will be present. Do you wish to hold those on the desk?
Yes, please, let's hold those until we have Mr. Reyes or Mr. Labange here. Next items, please.
Next items are items 7 through 24. Those are items for which public hearings have been held. Items, excuse me, item 7 is an ordinance as well. Do you wish to hold that?
Yes, let's hold item 7 for 12 members.
And that would leave 8 through 24, and committee reports have been submitted on items 10 and 11.
Okay, Mr. Rosendahl?
You want to do 15 special, I'll do it.
Sure, no, yeah, we can call it special, that sounds good.
And then 23?
Okay, 23 also?
Yeah.
22 for Mr. Alakon. Are there specials? No other specials, then we will take up the balance. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Those are approved, if we can send 14 forthwith, without objection, as well. Next items, please.
Next items are items for which public hearings have not been held, items 25 through 35, 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, colleagues, do we have cards on any of those?
Yes, I believe there are cards on 25, 27, 30, 32.
Okay.
Mr. President?
Yep.
I'd like to request that item 34 be continued for one week.
34?
And receive and file.
That would be till the 29th of October, okay?
And then receive and file item 35.
Okay, move to receive and file 35. Mr. Cardenas?
30 special.
30 special for Mr. Cardenas. All right. Any other specials? If not, we'll open and close the public hearings for the other items. That is 31, 33, and to receive and file 35. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Those are approved or received and filed. If we can call the roll for the special meeting, please.
Alakon, Cardenas, Gruel, Hahn, Wezar, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Weiss, Wesson, Zine, Garcetti, 11 members present, and a quorum, Mr. President.
Okay, first item?
There's one item on this meeting, it's an item for which public hearing has not been held, and 10 votes are required for consideration.
Any objection to consideration? Seeing none, that is before us. With item 36, we have a card, and I believe Mr. Wezar was going to call that special as well, so we will call that special. And if we can continue that back to the regular meeting and adjourn the special meeting, please. That'll take us to general public comment now. For items that are not on the agenda today, but nevertheless under the jurisdiction of the City Council, we have general public comment. There is guidelines for you up there at the podium, it's two minutes per speaker and a clock to help you manage your time, and we welcome those who've taken time out of their day to be here. And we have, as our first speaker, Oscar Johnson. I'd like to come forward.
Good morning, LA City Council. My name is Oscar Johnson, a pro actor with the homeless in the city of Los Angeles. I'd like to speak about the poor, the hard condition of African-Americans in America, and also the hard condition of African-Americans on Skid Row. How does America get so many millions of dollars a year and don't spend anything for the homeless on Skid Row to get them off that bad condition they're in? You've got women and children sleeping on the coal and on the stone, on the concrete in L.A. in the cold months on Skid Row. You've got a place called the Midnight Mission, where they put African-Americans and other ethnic groups in there, they're shoved around like animals and living for no purpose or no aim. But I think something should be did about it. We should end government waste, we should end economic racism. We need jobs, we need self-worth. We need to stop illegal immigration. We have illegal immigrants working in McDonald's, we have illegal immigrants managing liquor stores in Los Angeles, we have illegal immigrants managing the food for less in Los Angeles, and a lot of those food for less is selling outdated food, shouldn't be sold, and we're asking voters to vote no on R. Los Angeles needs no more taxes, the poor people don't need to pay any more taxes. We need more representation, we need to get 100,000 people to come together and protest and stand up against bad government. We need better schools, one every four student in our country today is dropping out of school. We need more, we need to go further in a MARS direction, because I think one founder, father of this country, John Adams, said that democracy might be very hard to be successful without MARS, and I almost think everything might be successful without MARS. The MARS factory in our society has failed. African-Americans don't have a decent restaurant in Los Angeles to eat in. We just like new slaves, ex-slaves on the new plantation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Arnold Sacks is our next speaker. After Mr. Sacks will be Melrose Larry Green.
Good morning, you criminals.
Sir, again, you've been warned about that. If you would like to, please refrain, as it says right there, from slanderous comments. And we'd ask you to just be respectful. And we'd ask you, the floor is mine right now, sir, we'll give you your time back, but we'd ask you just to be respectful. It's not a requirement, but I'm asking you. Person to person is somebody who's very respectful to you, if you would please be respectful to us as well, okay? Thank you.
It would be, if you weren't acting that way, it would be so much easier to be respectful, but unfortunately, the behavior here is the cause for the reason, the cause for the naming. It's not, it's not.
Sir, I've been nothing but respectful. It's not criminal behavior that you've brought to us right now, and you've called a group of people criminals. That is disrespectful, in my judgment. I've never called you a criminal, I've not called you names. I actually am very respectful of your right to speak, and I will continue to be, but I demand that you be respectful to us as well, and that is how democracy works. So I will state that again, I hope that you will internalize that, and please, stick to the substance of what you'd like to say. We've provided help for questions, we have tried to get you answers to things you want. You're here very frequently, and we will continue to do that, because that is your right and privilege, and that is part of respect. I'm just asking you to please be respectful as well.
Can I have my time back?
I already said you would, sir.
Thank you. Boy, okay. High-speed rail, supported by the County Board of Supervisors, $9 billion to be spent for completion of a project by 2025 maybe, benefiting all of Californians. Locally, three supervisors against a half-cent sales tax. Why? Because it's unfair distribution of funding. If it's unfair locally, why is it fair throughout the state to distribute $9 billion? How many of Los Angeles County will be able to benefit from this high-speed rail line? We have a half-cent sales tax, 30-year length being called for, no completion date for any project, which is different from the same sales tax that's been authorized by the legislation five years ago but never acted on. Why was it never acted on? Long-range plans from 2001 projects, what is the status on that? Please vote no on Measure R, not because we don't need the projects, but because we have the same lame leadership running this county and the MTA, and nobody is answerable to any results for any work that's done. No Blue Line completion, no Red Line completion, no Purple Line completion, no Gold Line completion, no Orange Line completion, and we don't know about the Expo Line. Just take their word for it. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Melrose Larry Green. After that is Damian Goodman.
Good morning. Listen, I haven't been down here for a while. Let me start out by saying, number one, I don't, previous speakers are a hard act to follow. I love you guys, number one. You're wonderful people, and God knows, I'm a little bit controversial with my politics in town, but I love what you're doing in City Council. Now, I was down to talk about the MTA. I was down in Carson the other day to see a woman who's running for Vice President, speaking at Home Depot Center, and I took the red line. Good morning, Jose Wezar, good morning, Jose. I took the red line to the blue line, to the Artigia Center, and took another 130 bus, and I got there in less time than driving. I took back on the green line, and it was great. So I think the MTA is wonderful, that's number one. Number two, I did want to come here today to tell you all, it's very vitriolic times in America. Now, we all know what's going on in politics, but if you want to have true love in your house, apartment, or house, adopt a dog or a cat from the city of L.A. You may remember that beautiful cat that I adopted three years ago, Will? That cat is in my little apartment on Las Palmas, and nobody sleeps with me but that cat. Every night, I have love, and you would not believe, not stopping Jewish Republican in Hollywood, but I get so much love, and I want you all to adopt a dog or a cat. Believe you me, I got two cats, and that's twice the love. Thirdly, I want to say that I know that, you know, I saw Councilman Garcetti having lunch, and I wish some good luck with Senator Obama, said, you know, you can beat Hillary Clinton. Well, I can't, I wish you too much good luck. I just want to say, this is a great presidential race, and I want you all to know, we need to be united. I'm not conceding anything one way or the other, but whether Obama or McCain wins, the problems remain in this country, and you've got my support, Eric, if Obama does win. But I do love Mayor Vera Gosa very, very much, I want to get that in. Good luck with the World Series, and good luck with all the, I got to go back to my other stuff. Thank you very much, and I love these guys, I love the City Council, so whatever you say, I love you, and you are definitely not criminals. God bless you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Green, appreciate it. Damian Goodman is our next speaker. After that is Olga Hall. Good morning, Ms. Goodman.
I know, but Tampa Bay, I live in Florida, too, part of the year.
Good morning, sir.
Good morning. Damian Goodman, representing the Fix Expo campaign, available on the web at fixexpo.org. In a matter of hours, the CPUC judge will render a draft decision regarding the Expo line crossings near Dorsey High School in Fall City Learning Center that will be either adopted or amended by the full PUC Commission in November. It is disappointing that the community and the lives that are at stake have to rely on the decisions of a regulatory agency that is susceptible to political pressures. For two years, I've been bringing to the Expo Authority Board, which includes Bernard Parfs, Jan Perry, and Herb Wesson, for two years I've been bringing to them what people have been bringing for 20. We presented the studies, testimonies, media reports, documents, including MTA's own documents, showing that the street-level crossings will lead to accidents and deaths and will worsen traffic. We've shown and proven that all of these adverse hazards are in the majority, minority, and/or poor communities along the Expo Phase 1 community, and none are in the one-majority Caucasian and middle to upper-income community. These documents are not of our creation. I and the Fix Expo campaign are simply a conduit. But councilmembers, the South LA community has not just been abandoned, the politicians in the Expo Authority has declared war on the very community they were elected to serve. We did not fire the first shot in this war. We will never have the ammunition they do, and we've tried to negotiate to no avail. Thus, we will forge on against all odds, because this issue is too important. At stake are life, limb, and community, and what more elderly members of our group have been fighting for their entire lives, equity and fairness. And so we'll begin coming to this council meeting more frequently, in part because we have no other option. They failed to listen, and they failed to lead. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Olga Hall is our next speaker. After that is Michael Cardion. Good morning, Ms. Hall.
Good morning. Good morning, Mr. President and council members. A year ago, on September 27, 2007, there was a press conference at the Southwest Museum to announce the formation of the Southwest Society, a blue-driven committee created to help raise funds to restore and revitalize the Southwest Museum and Casa de Adobe. How much money the Southwest Society has raised in almost 13 months? Councilman Wezar knows it's zero. It's zero. What's in it, fact that the only reason the Southwest Society was created was to use it as a political pawn, to deceive the community and others in believing that you were working for the benefit of the Southwest Museum, but in reality, you are working to benefit the Autry? Councilman Wezar, why are you allowing the Autry to steal this great treasure from our community? When are you going to stand up to the Autry and have the courage to protect the Southwest Museum?
Mr. President, she should be directing her comments to the whole council, not to one particular member.
Okay, the first museum in Los Angeles. If you are truly committed to save the Southwest Museum, you should stand up and say, "I am committed to protect the Southwest Museum, to have it be the primary exhibition space with its incredible collection of Native American Indian artifacts. I am committed to have it be a world-class museum on top of Mount Washington." This is the kind of leadership we need, and you sought to deliver it. CD14, you sought to deliver it to CD14, to protect the community, the whole community. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Hall. Our next speaker is Michael Cardion. After that will be Zuma Dog. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Michael Cardion. I'd like to say thank you to Mr. Cardenas and Mr. Wesson for their passion. While you're sitting there, Mr. Cardenas, or excuse me, can somebody tell Mr. Cardenas, while he's sitting there, can you show Mr. Wezar a little passion? We need that kind of passion in CD14. Apparently, the speaker before me is very adamant about we don't have it. We're lacking representation in CD14. We understand that Mr. Wezar comes from the Board of Education, things are run different there, but he is in CD14 now. Mr. Wezar has some kind of opinion that I'm going to go away, I'm not. All I asked for the other day was for him to sit down and speak with me. Mr. Wezar stated that I have a few seconds while he's here. I waited one day for three hours, Mr. Wezar was too busy. A following week, I waited for 45 minutes, he was too busy while he read the paper. Well, I will not sit and wait like an idiot while you read the paper. I will come, and I will speak. I will come and I will speak my piece and I'll speak it up here, whether you're comfortable with it or not. We have a lot of projects that are not being addressed in my community. This is why I'm here. On Soto at the Ten Freeway, while Mr. Wezar took office, there was a landslide. All his office did was put some barricades on it. You force people to walk across the street to Hazard Park where there is no sidewalk, but yet Mr. Wezar's office puts in some bump curve or something to direct traffic in a different area way? I ask myself, Mr. Wezar's staff drives right by these things on a daily basis but does nothing. They get a paycheck, but they're not proactive in the community. I've tried to work with Mr. Wezar's office, but no, he failed. They're too busy. He says he spends twenty hours a day. I tell him, he's following in the mayor's footsteps. All talk and no action. He does one thing, what he feels like, and he ignores the community's request.
The next, Mr. Wezar?
Mr. Carrion, I've told you over and over again that my staff will not deal with you unless you deal with them with respect and courtesy, which you do not. Secondly, I'm always available to speak with you. You were here for hours sitting there. I went over a few times, you didn't want to come over, so I'm always available. You got your fifty minutes of fame on TV once again, so you got what you accomplished. Thank you.
Mr. Dog? Oh yeah, Mr. Reyes?
Yes, Council President. I just wanted to, for the record, share my colleagues that this past weekend, we had a celebration committing a grand name, Edward R. Roybal, for the new school we built and there was passion, there was energy from Councilman Wezar, but through his efforts in coordinating, recruiting, taking sure we got the votes to get this school built. And so we wanted passion. I think some people videotaped it. There was a lot of emotion and I congratulate them on such a great victory for our community.
Absolutely. Thank you very much, Mr. Reyes. Mr. Dog?
Yes, thank you. I'm having a great time in Jose Wezar's district. I've been living there and I've, I had a nice event at the Casa Princesa on Friday. We had forty, fifty people from Sunland to Hunger, Granada Hills, Venice, all the way coming into the district, also touching into Reyes's district. And so I'd like to announce, the event was such a success, some of you missed it, you can't come in the evening. Saturday, November 1st, ZapFest, Casa Princesa parking lot. It's the last chance to go over all the ballot initiatives, to help rally people, to get them to vote. So bring people to the Casa Princesa parking lot, Saturday, November 1st, 8:00 AM, for the ZapFest, Zuma's Action Plan, where we do much more than just talk and blow smoke. I will be having some specific actions to be taken. Everybody come by from all districts, part of the fiscal stimulus zone that I'm doing at Casa Princesa. Also, I'd like to say more at ladailyblog.com. I haven't come out on a presidential candidate yet, but one way or the other, but I heard that if Obama wins, Council President Garcetti will be getting an appointment at a national level. So let's hope Obama wins so Garcetti will get out of here, he can screw up the rest of the country and then we can have a council election and put a zapper grassroots candidate in there. And also, I couldn't come up here without mentioning, please, council members, embrace Dr. W. Edwards Deming, his fourteen points. Now, by a show of hands, if you've even just heard of Dr. W. Edwards Deming, a show of hands. Councilmember Smith has, and that's very good. It's very problematic. I'm here to tell you, this city is going in down Tubbsville. Tijuana will be looking up and saying, "Ha ha, we're better than LA" if you do not embrace Deming's fourteen points. Learn them, use them. And also, no on all bonds and taxes, no on A, no on B, no on R, no on J. The good folks from Two are here, I believe that's a yes, and eleven is a yes. But all these bonds and taxes, no, 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 no.
Thank you, Mr. Dog. Appreciate the compliment as well. We've got Esia Loughlin is our next speaker. Esio? Excuse me if I mispronounced that. Oh, it's Esther. I'm sorry. Esther Loughlin. My bad scene, sorry. Good morning. And then after that is Chuck Tenon.
My name is Esther Loughlin and I live in the 10th District of Los Angeles. I've always thought that government was established to protect the inalienable rights of its citizens. And fundamental to the protection of the inalienable rights is the right to work or the right to gain full employment. My son, Michael, has been, is still employed at the Los Angeles Department of Water and Power, but he's on no shift, no pay, without cause, and he's been that way since 101707, which is a year now. On 101907, I first came here to talk to this council and to represent my son and let him know that he was being unjustly penalized by the LADWP. Since then, I've been to court, I had written receivership, I took Mr. Weston, and then I went to the regular court to complain against Mr. Vera Gosa because nobody seems to be doing anything. The courts have done nothing, okay? One, on the end of September, I was again here and Miss Gruel was the president pro tem about the same problem, I talked to Mr. Johnson, okay? He asked for correspondence. On October, October the 1st, my son sent him written correspondence signed with the records that he had to prove that he was being unjustly or he was on no shift, no pay, without cause. Okay? So I'm here today because absolutely nothing has happened. This is ridiculous. What I want to know is, what can a citizen do to make government work? In a few days, we will be responsible for paying the first installment of taxes. Where's it supposed to come from? I don't know. And why? Why should we be forced to pay for a government that doesn't work? And what does the city of Los Angeles intend to do? This is bad. This is, this is rotten government.
Appreciate your testimony today. Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Chuck Tenon. Under the Brown Act, ma'am, we can only hear the testimony or have a very short response. But we'll see if we can get you some assistance on that. Chuck Tenon is our next speaker and then Noel Weiss will follow. After that will be Rick Nightengale out in Van Nuys. Good morning.
Good morning, President Garcetti, council members. Chuck Tenon. With regard to housing, we have ninety neighborhood city councils in this city. Each gets $50,000 budget per year. It should be mandatory for each to take $5,000 to hire four qualified city planners for issues and to explain in details the entire process of development projects in their communities that affects the lives of those people that live in the communities. Also, the people of Los Angeles should know what happened to the $365 million in the Department of Transportation's 81 traffic mitigation funds for our streets that they had in 2005 in just three short years. Gosh, what happened to it? And finally, I'd like to pay my condolences to Ms. Arvis Jones. On Monday night, her son, whose wife is going to have a baby in two months, was shot and killed by a needless drive-by. Ms. Arvis is an active, strong supporter of Janice Hahn's Gang Prevention Task Force and is giving her time informing and rehearsing the Watts Youth Choir, who are going to sing a song entitled, "Stop the Violence, We Can All Live in Peace," which will be a message in music to help fund gang prevention youth programs in this city. Stop the violence, we can all live in peace, let's put love back in our streets. God bless Ms. Arvis and her lost son. And finally, Tom Labonge, we're behind you on that massive giant project. The only good thing it's going to do is put money in the pockets of the developers and the people that are building there, but it's going to increase massive transit problems in the community. And what do the people get? And those people given access off the freeway for Mr. Labonge. Do something and give something back if you're going to take. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Noel Weiss. After that will be Rick Nightengale out in Van Nuys.
Council members, good, good morning, council members. I'm here, I want to talk about Proposition A and true political, too courageous political leadership. I remember last February, Mr. Smith was very excited about the fact that Janice took off the Proposition A at that time because it probably would have passed. It's a different political environment now, it's really tough and, you know, it's what we're talking about here. Every, but every politician, every single one of you, here inside, outside, you have a core decision to make, all of you. That core decision is, are you going to lead public opinion or are you going to follow public opinion? Now, there are times that you follow, but there are times when you lead. Now, none of us are perfect, you reflect our imperfections. But the bottom line is, when there is a need, when there is a requirement, you guys, we have to stand up. Now, again, in a minute and sixteen seconds, I just basically want to say, number one, our institutions, the media, if they're saying that we don't, that we need to first evaluate this, they're wrong. You want accountability, you go Proposition A. Why? Because for the first time in the history of the city, we have accountability by the controller. The controller by the statute is mandated to audit every single program and the program has to be effective. Ladies and gentlemen and people, we cannot pander as political leaders or institutions to the suppressionist. Chief Bratton recognizes this, that's why he is supportive of this. We, as a city, are under attack. We are under attack, we should not surrender. Where are we under attack from? The El Salvadorian gangs, among others, who are coming in trying to corrupt our kids, our society, our institutions and our values. Now, I got to tell you, they got a lot more than $30 million, people. And anybody who wants to, and these funds are going to be segregated and I guarantee you, politics, because I know a little bit about politics notwithstanding, I will guarantee you that this $30 million, when this is set aside as a dedicated fund, all of this other money, it's going to be cut by $30 million, just like they did with the lottery. So the bottom line is, it's time for the political leaders of this city to stand up, be clear and vote yes on Proposition A. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Rick Nightengale out in Van Nuys. Good morning, Mr. Nightengale.
Yeah, good morning, Rick Nightengale. I'm basically about regarding like Proposition R. We turn around and we pay a gas tax. I have no idea where everybody embezzled the gas tax money from way back when, but years ago, that was for roads, strictly for roads, not general fund, not anything else except for roads. And obviously, and roads and bridges and so forth. And they don't do it now. They saw the, all that money sitting there and they decided to use it for something else. Mainly why I'm here is that regarding water, Zuma Dog has talked about it numerously. I was at, excuse me, at the Valley Vote this week and Mr. Labonge was there. And there is a real big crisis. People don't realize how big a crisis this situation is about water. And you people want to keep on building more and think more people are coming here. You need to turn around and discourage, I'm sorry, discourage people from coming here. Because there is not any water for everybody that is coming. It's, they're talking about if there, everybody talks about an earthquake. If an earthquake happens up north, we are getting close to 60% of our water from there and we will be shut off. You're not getting any money from the Colorado River, so you're going to be depending on the wells. And I hope that you will, I didn't see anybody else at the meeting, I don't know if you've gotten all the information, but talk to Mr. Labonge because he was there and he got the brochures and so forth. People better face up to it. I've been pressing on it, I know I use way too much water, I'd love to have some gray water. It would be well worth me paying more money to turn around and have that come in, like I have two meters, irrigation meter and so forth, and I'm willing to pay more and I'm sure everybody where I live would pay more to get some gray water so we could get on this program. But you people have not mentioned it at all and either does DWP mention it at all. I'd appreciate you do. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Nightengale. And that will close our general public comment. I want to thank all members of the public who testified today. We have next, item 36. Mr. Wezar is asked to take it out of order. If there's no objection, let's go ahead and take up item 36. We do have some cards on this, Mr. Wezar. Should I take the cards first?
Yes, we could take the cards, please.
Okay. Jim Lynch is our first speaker and then Zuma Dog.
Good morning, Mr. Council President and honorable council members. My name's Jim Lynch and I'm here on behalf of the Los Angeles Community College District, the Citizens Oversight Committee for Proposition A and AA funds that were passed earlier in this decade. And here to encourage your support for our jobs, local jobs, our economy and education in Los Angeles region. And you can do that through support of our Measure J, which is on the November ballot. As the chairman of the committee over the past three years, I've had the opportunity and pleasure to help monitor the progress and to also check on the expenses and the value that the districts received from all of the construction and ultimately, the programs that will be put on in the buildings and facilities that have been created through the Proposition A and Proposition AA funds. And those have turned out to be spent just in an excellent manner, even in light of what you've all experienced here in the city with the escalating costs of such fundamental products as steel and concrete. We've been able to manage our way through these and very smartly purchase these and move our processes along quickly so that time didn't delay and costs go up unnecessarily and consequently removing projects from the list that was originally created. But what I would like to express and I hope that all of you will agree with me in this regard is that the past history of this district and the use of its funds has been phenomenally good and it should by all right continue on with Measure J. And one of the best things, our safety net for our community is our community college system. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Wezar? Oh, Zuma Dog, I'm sorry, Zuma Dog. And then we'll go to the council members.
Oh, yeah. He just accidentally forgot. Just kidding.
Yes, I did.
My good friend Dennisine, he would never do that to me. Or at least Dennisine would never do that to me.
Not intentionally, not intentionally.
Okay, this is Jay.
Put your time back on the clock. Take him up to two minutes, please.
Yes, please put it back to two minutes like the council member just recently. Yeah, hey! It's a victory for the people. I'll almost endorse you for reelection based on that. So anyway, this is Measure J and I do believe, like everything, they wrap it up in a warm and fuzzy. Who could say no to all these great, wonderful things for classrooms, laboratories, equipment, nurses, firefighters, da, 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 da? Well, we know we never end up getting any of that, so if you want to know what Measure J won't accomplish, just look at what it says it's going to do. That's what Zuma Dog always does because I've been around the block a little bit. And I'd like to say that I have been told, the Southwest Museum supporters, we got a citizens' alert right now for everybody that wants to maintain the Southwest Museum. I believe that this will allow the Southwest Museum to be turned, they're saying they're going to just turn it into a college. They're saying that if J passes, that Southwest Museum, goodbye billion-dollar artifacts. Oh, we're just going to store it at the Griffith Park, the Autry Museum. Oh, you know, we need classroom space for the kids and the electricians and da, 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 da. And so we'll just keep all these billion dollars worth of artifacts in the Autry safekeeping and they don't have to pay a penny for it. And then we're going to turn it into a college and I can't wait to see the agenda that that college pushes. I can't wait to see that kind of charter school, okay? And I won't get into that, but so I'm here to say, vote no on J. Yeah, yeah, I'm here to say, vote no on J. Yeah, it's a little rap in the spirit of Run DMC. I'm here to say, vote no on J. It'll turn the Southwest Museum into a college and give the billion dollars worth of artifacts to the Autries to keep in their safekeeping that they won't have to pay anything for and it strips away the culture of the community and the heritage and all types of bad things are going to happen if you do this on that sacred land. Just ask all the people, y'all. So that's what I'm here to say. They always wrap it up in a warm and fuzzy. We need all this classroom space. Oh, it has to be at the Southwest Museum. I say, vote no on J.
Olga Hall, Olga Hall, on item number 36, followed by Michael Carrion on item number 36.
Hello. I was not prepared to speak on this issue, but yes, no on J. That's $11 million that the, um, this proposition is going to give the Autry so they can get rid of the Southwest Museum, convert it into a school. That's not what the community wants. The community wants a first-class museum and you are not listening. This was planned in secrecy again, just like the, um, what he said, everything that the Autry does, always in secrecy. They're not, they're not, they don't care about our community. That's all. You need to vote no on Measure J. What are they going to do with $11 million when we have proposed $25 million? when we have proposed twenty-five million dollars for expansion and rehabilitation of the Southwest Museum? Why do they want eleven million dollars? You need to listen. This is another one of the gains that Autry plays. Last week, who came to represent the Autry? Their people, their lobbyists, their, um, the people that employ, but not the community. The community has spoken and has said no on Proposition J. You need to listen. We need to save the Southwest Museum, and it's every one of you's responsibility. This is the first museum in Los Angeles.
Thank you. Michael Carrion?
Proposition J, it leaves a lot out here. Says we're gonna divert money for classrooms, laboratories. Money to who? LAUSD again? Another previous employee of Mr. Weisar? LAUSD has enough money. LAUSD is building and building and building, and it's like Mr. Reyes said, the LAUSD got a school built, but Mr. Reyes failed to tell you is how many people were put out of their homes. Mr. Weisar did make a comment that that property was able to be mitigated, but didn't do it. Dropped the ball. So, we're gonna pass another measure, Proposition J, so we can give the LA School Board more money to put on, build another school, build classrooms. For whom? So that it can be all caught up in lawyers and in landfills and everything else? This money will never reach the students, especially students that are not in LA Unified School District. So, you want the people to pay more taxes, bring another measure for the money to be squandered. Squandered. And yes, I grew up in Mr. Reyes' district. My family was put out. We lived where Belmont High School was put up, and our property was taken by eminent domain. So, when Mr. Reyes stands up to stand behind Mr. Weisar, he has to remember that. LA Unified School District can't manage their own property. They can't manage the money they have. Yet, you wanna tell us that you're gonna put this bill on there so we can give them more money? So that they can squander that away? I don't know. Maybe there's something in the works. Maybe there's another school coming up in Boyle Heights. I don't know. But I know that in El Surino, Proposition J, money will never reach. Never. Not what Mr. Weisar had to handle.
Okay, that's it for public speakers. We'll now go to Councilmember Gruel, who was the second on the motion. Then we'll go to you, Mr. Weisar. Oh, Mr. Weisar, and then you. Okay, Mr. Weisar, and then Councilmember Gruel.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. And one of the last speakers mentioned this is for LAUSD. This is not for LAUSD. This is for the community colleges. And ladies and gentlemen, as one of the previous speakers also said, the community colleges, as you all know, has served as a safety net for many of our young people in the city of LA for decades. And what we see before us is a continuation of a building and maintenance program that has helped many more young people realize their dreams. The community colleges has served both as a place for people to go get a technical career education, as well as a place to go spend a couple of years and then move on to a four-year institution. And as many of us know, in this day and age, when we wanna support people having those opportunities, we wanna support young people going on to college, they also need a place in which to do that that is upgraded, safe, and also it provides the modern equipment for which them to succeed. In this bond, it's providing upgrades to the classrooms, technology upgrades, and other items. And one of the things that we've been in the forefront as a council to do is to ensure that more of our own buildings are green. And the community colleges has been recognized throughout the country for its green program. This program will actually make most of its buildings, through this program, LEED-certified. And we wanna acknowledge that, and we wanna commend them for the tremendous work they've done to ensure that we continue to move forward on a green agenda, not only for the community colleges, but also for the city of LA. But you may ask, well, what about the fiscal prudence, and what about how are we gonna spend these dollars? And if you've heard from one of the oversight members who is a public, member of the public, not associated with the community colleges, they've been there to ensure that every dollar is well-spent. And if you've seen the commendations that the community colleges has gone because of their last bonds and how they spent that money, and most of those projects are actually almost complete as we speak today, they've done a tremendous job in ensuring that the taxpayers' dollars are well-spent. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a no-brainer, hopefully, and we will support this, and hopefully, the public will support this on November 4th and vote yes on Measure J. And finally, let me mention, one of the other speakers mentioned that some money will be used for the Southwest Museum in northeast Los Angeles. As I mentioned earlier, there is an effort underway by the Autry to keep the artifacts that that museum has at the Southwest Museum, modernize the museum, and also have the artifacts rotate throughout the city so that all Angelenos benefit from seeing those artifacts. In this bond, there is money to provide for possible classrooms, not at the museum, but a neighboring building, to have classrooms there for community college students to supplement what is happening at the museum. It's not gonna supplant what is happening, the operations of the museums, but actually supplement some of the activities, and I think this is a great thing. It's leveraging our resources to better serve our communities. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Now, Ms. Gruel.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Zine, and thank you, Mr. Weisar. I was proud to co-sign with you, and second by our President, Mr. Garcetti. When you talk about the community colleges and the important place it has in our region, you have to look just now at how we've seen the increase in the number of people who are going to community colleges. With the economy as it is, the community colleges have become a place, not only for individuals who are gonna then transfer to a four-year university, but even more so for people who are getting retrained. Valley College, which is in my district, has had three thousand new students participating in the school this year. Three thousand new. That is a huge increase in that area. These community colleges provide a very important resource and part of our educational system. They are no longer an afterthought. They are part of this system and one in which we value here in this region. And when you look at, and again, I know it's happening at all colleges, but you look in your own district, at Valley College, we have a nursing program. They're opening up a brand-new building that was allowed to be opened up because of a past bond. That bond helped them build this extraordinary. Now, it is, it literally looks like a hospital. People will be trained. When you talk about the nursing shortages we have in this region, those community colleges are a key component, and we are seeing that kind of change. If you drive by Valley College today, you can see that growth and that potential. And the districts, like in Mr. Garcetti's district, a great and a wonderful new chancellor there at that location. But it is one in which we have to continue to support, and that's why I was proud to help and to co-sign this with Mr. Weisar. This is an investment in our infrastructure of not just buildings, but our people, and the future jobs that we're gonna create, and the training that's gonna be available. And there's no better time to be able to provide that service than in this economic downturn where people need the opportunity to be retrained. And so, I stand up and wholeheartedly support, and thank you, Mr. Zine.
Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you. I think most everything that needs to be said has been said, and I thank you, Mr. Weisar and Ms. Gruel, for taking the lead on this. When folks wonder where this money goes and what sort of accountability there is, I would invite them out not to take the word of people who are on the community college board or the folks around this horseshoe. But I went about two weeks ago, when that new president was sworn in to the presidency of Los Angeles City College, the first permanent African-American woman to ever head up that college, an amazing leader, on the same day that we opened up the Martin Luther King Library on Los Angeles City College campus. And if you saw the faces of these kids who had a library that was every bit as good as UCLA, or USC, or an Ivy League school, this island of learning, where literally, as I talked to some of them, they were almost tearing up to say, "We were going to college and on this campus, and the facilities were breaking down, the pipes were leaking and everything else, and now, when I come into this place, all I wanna do is learn." And they have stations where they can have good technology and computers, and they can go in and pull a book off the shelf, and they can find their dreams. Nobody could for a second be against this. Because what it also showed was accountability from the last two. I'm sometimes a skeptic about these things, and I saw with A and AA how effectively this community college district spent those dollars, on time, sometimes under budget, even with rising construction costs. We have an amazing driver, and right now, as our economy has gone down, there is no time more that we need community colleges in this country than right now. We've had discussions at the national level about stimulus packages that have focused on, where do you put that money immediately to help people? Well, it's in the community colleges, because if people have been dislocated from their jobs, they can get new skills right there in the community college in their neighborhood, in a way that is affordable. When they have been looking for a job for the first time as a youth that's been discarded or never graduated from high school, they can get their degrees, and they can get their first job. And as Ms. Gruel said, we started LACC when we saw nursing shortage and a healthcare shortage in East Hollywood area. We started a model program, working together with the hospitals that were just up the street, but weren't hiring anybody from the neighborhood, about how to get on the bottom rung of that ladder, that career ladder, to be at first a nurse assistant, and then eventually, we've been getting registered nurses, and we put the nursing program back at LACC. And some people are even nurse practitioners. This is the success story of America, and the community colleges are that driver. So, as we look at how the heck is America gonna get out of these dumps, it's by investing in people, and there's no better way to invest in people, to give them the dignity of the buildings and the studying surroundings that they need. We've got two members of this body who came out of Los Angeles City College and the community college district. There is evidence of the success, and I urge everybody, not only in this horseshoe, to support Prop J, but to support it at the ballot box, too, because if we can pass that, we can say to a new generation of young people, a new generation of adults who wanna get their education for the first time, you matter, we value you. That's where the money goes.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. Mr. Lebon, followed by Mr. Reyes.
As a member of council who, in nineteen seventy-one, attended Los Angeles City College and was able to get a boost to go to Cal Poly San Luis Obispo, I rise high to support Prop J, and there's nothing more important than the opportunities that community colleges give to others in the challenges of education. I wasn't a great student in high school. I was a C student. Janice Hahn likes to share with me. It's our claim to fame. Played football at City College, which got me into the state college system at Cal Poly. Finished at LA State. But if it wasn't for Los Angeles City College and Bob Lotte, a teacher, and Mr. Schlesinger, a teacher, Professor Schlesinger, Milt Davis, who I speak of often, my mentor there, Barbara Benjamin Cohen, an English teacher, who was there. I can name many teachers from Los Angeles City College who affected. Bob Court, who was a psychology teacher, who made a difference, including my football coach, Ron Botchin, and John Seeley. So, I stand to support J. It will make a difference in the lives of many people and give them an opportunity to contribute, and we should work hard to support it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Lebon. Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. You know, colleagues, I'd like to share with you and the public that often we hear from the Palm Water and Power and different engines of our economy that our labor force is one in which many of the trained and skilled individuals are retiring, that though that personnel that helps maintain our infrastructure are retiring. And because of the changes in our school system, many of those who should be prepared or have access to those skilled development opportunities, while they just don't exist. So, here we have a community college that's offering many of the skills that will produce jobs, skilled individuals that can help maintain our infrastructure, which is important for our water needs, our power needs, and how we move our goods and services throughout this area and throughout this country. So, it is vital to our economy and to our state of our business environment and continue improving that we can actually have a labor force that can address the needs of our infrastructure. So, those are very critical issues that are before us. Measure J is much needed. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. We have one more public speaker that turned the card in, and Mr. Stagg, you don't want to speak, Mr. Stagg? Okay, well, thank you. That was our last comment on that. That matter is now before us. Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Fourteen ayes. That matter passes. Thank you. Congratulations. And if we can go to number one to seven on consent, we have those matters, and we have, I count fourteen council members. Mr. Cardenas, you have a comment?
Yes, thank you. We have one of the brass from the fire department and also from the police department to present on item thirty. I was hoping we could take it out of order.
Well, we just wanna do one to seven real quick, because there's no comment on it.
Okay, real quick. Yeah, yeah, cool, cool.
We're doing the ordinances now. Let's do one to seven, and then we'll come to Mr. Cardenas. Madam Clerk, on the items number one to seven. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Okay, thank you. Matters are approved. And now, Mr. Cardenas, you have an introduction? Number thirty. All right, Madam Clerk, number thirty out of order. Number thirty, Mr. Cardenas. Mr. Cardenas, number thirty, you're up.
Yes, thank you very much. We're on item thirty. If Fire Chief Cooper and also Commander Gannon can come forward, and also Akil. Yes, public comment first, and then we'll...
All right, Mr. Cardenas, you want a public comment? Here we go, public comment?
Public comment, yeah.
We have on this, Noreen McLendon. Noreen McLendon.
I had all my notes, and now I can't find them. Can you call another speaker? Give me, call me back.
Are you gonna speak, ma'am?
Yeah, if you could call another speaker.
I'll call another speaker first. Okay. How about Alex Sanchez? Alex Sanchez, number thirty. Thank you. Go ahead, sir.
Okay. You know, one of the things that I, when I went through this training, I felt that we were creating more than just a training for gang members or gang intervention workers to be able to go out there and fulfill their duties as gang interventionists. But what I felt was that we created an alliance with the fire department in regards to this specific issues in the streets. We know that the fire department is the first ones to come to the scenes at times, and it's crucial for gang interventionists to create this alliance in regards to really building a safe environment for this firemen to do their duties when a victim is injured or in agony, and you have the community outrage because of the incident. I thought that it was really important to learn those protocols that we learned in this training, because we need to build a protocol in ways in which we conduct our work in the streets. That should be written, but also, it should be trained by professionals. And I believe that through this curriculum that we went through, this training institute that we went through, we have succeeded in building not only an alliance with the Los Angeles Fire Department, but also bridging those gaps between other gang intervention agencies in the city of LA. Thank you.
Thank you. Zuma Dogg. Zuma Dogg.
Yes, first of all, although I have spoken out against some of these programs or whatnot, gang intervention programs fundamentally and conceptually, of course, I support. I'm all for it. My issue, when I've spoken against this, has been with the wastefulness of certain programs and this type of thing, but this is not about that. Okay, so first of all, what I'd like to say, I've shared to the community, some of the gang intervention workers, they're kinda even scared to go out there to do some of the jobs, to do the enforcement. So, you know, this isn't a slam on the gang enforcement workers in some of the nonprofits. So, if there's perhaps some way you could just go to them and try to work with them, because some of them are even scared to do their jobs, and then it just gets worse. Dr. W. Edwards Demming, I hope you can look into him. He's got fourteen-point plan that helps break through the types of barriers and help departments that work better together, breaks down barriers and helps facilitate cooperation, and I think it's very urgently needed. If I'm here and can say one thing as a person from the public who has a voice to help this gang intervention problem and to help the communication of protocols, it's please see Dr. W. Edwards Demming's fourteen-point plan. He's a globally-known consultant when it comes to improving quality and efficiency. So, thank you for that. And also, I would just like to say, please stop wasting a lot of the money through nonprofits... And also, I would just like to say, please stop wasting a lot of the money through nonprofits. We need to really get serious about it and I don't know how to do that. It's the biggest frustration because here we have this great opportunity through the gang intervention programs, but it feels like we're doing something. It feels like the city's doing something because they're talking about it and they want to fund it and they say the programs are getting better, but it still feels like a big hole of accountability, a big sinkhole. And so I'm just begging you guys to please embrace Dr. Deming and somehow make this all work in the spirit in which it's intended. I don't know what else I can say.
Nico Deloney.
Ladies and gentlemen of the council, my name is Nico Deloney. I'm a member of Unity One. I'm also a graduate of PCITI. And with that training, I know that the city council and the Ad-Hoc Committee has come with the help of Conny Rice with the definition of hardcore street interventionist and I stand before you as that definition. I also stand before you as a legacy, or shall I say, the remembrance of Bo Taylor's dream because with Bo Taylor's dream, I continue on. He instilled inside of my heart probably the best imagery of what the community should look like, should be like, and should feel like. Also, with the chairs that you see before me, in the history of the city of Los Angeles, the fire department, the LAPD, the sheriff department, the city attorney's office, and the probation department have never come together to be involved with anything that has something to do with street except for suppression. I would also like to say that the main reason I stand before you is because I would like to be considered a productive member of society. And with the training that I received from PCITI and all of the knowledge, I know that SOGs are standard operating guidelines and not just some old gangster. Thank you.
You ready?
I'm ready.
Okay, there you go. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning. My name's Noreen McLendon. I'm the Executive Director of Concerned Citizens of South Central Los Angeles, but today I'm here as a proud graduate of the Professional Community Intervention Training Institute. And the training we received at the Professional Community Intervention Training Institute was second to none. We learned how to establish an incident command structure. We learned about the procedures of the police and fire department to ensure that we are effective in assisting their departments in a crisis situation. We learned how to critically analyze a crisis situation before engaging and thus reducing the potential to become part of the problem. We were certified in CPR and first aid. We established a standard of conduct for intervention workers. In short, we were trained as professionals. Inasmuch as intervention is recognized as a vital part of public safety, members of the city of Los Angeles can rest easier because there are professionally trained intervention specialists being produced by the Professional Community Intervention Training Institute. And I'd also like to say that there are other institutes and training programs being established and I think that there should be as many training institutes as possible as long as the people that are training understand the work of community intervention and gang intervention, not just academics who have theory and concepts and opinions, but it has to be people who understand the street work. Gang intervention, street, community intervention requires the people who have been there to understand how to diffuse situations. It's the one place where Harvard Law degrees and other degrees are not necessarily applicable, but I thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you. Rhonda Claudio? Rhonda?
Yes, hi. Professional Community Intervention Specialist regarding Maximum Force Enterprises have done a superior job in developing PCITI. We have flourished into Crisis Abatement Specialists. PCITI are the royal flush that will flush out division, bridging ethnic groups, law enforcement, fire departments, and communities into having one common cultural heritage. PCITI have learned to diffuse the adversary without escalating the problem. I see PCITI Intervention Prevention Specialists as a peace offering to society. PCITI are the virtuous group of people that price is far above rubies. We as peacemakers request your presence and participation to join our caravan of love. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Blinkie Rodriguez.
Good morning, City Council. Just came in support of Maximum Force and the responder street survival training that is getting put in place. You know, through the years, we've talked about accountability and how we begin to move forward. I mean, sitting before you now, you see the Los Angeles Police Department, Los Angeles Fire Department, and it's a wonderful time. I think it's a great time for this city to begin to embellish the work of gang intervention. There's a role for everyone to play and particularly now we're seeing the willingness of all the institutions that have been in this city for so many years on how we now, all the collective, we come together and moving forward on the right foot. There's a lot of tenants that have worked. In times past, I stood in these chambers and I've heard people say ten years of waste and that's not true. There's been a lot accomplished over the last decade. And I think truly now, with the work that's going on with Maximum Force and a lot of the openness with Maximum Force as it relates to tenants within other agencies that they bring to the table. So I am here in 100% support of this training academy. It's well overdue. It's already in progress. It's already rolling and it's really, really causing bridges between all the players of this city. So again, I come in full support and I thank you for your time.
Bobby Eris.
Counsel, it's my pleasure to be here. Sixth generation Angelino, it's a great day. We're here really to support Akil Bashir. You know, this is my twentieth year working with Blinkie on, with this particular population. What I want to state to people here is that we need to understand that this movement needs to be practitioner based. Having spent fourteen years in higher education, I'm well aware that there's research, my alma mater USC, that's good research and there's research that's bad research. There's research that is dated. There's research that they use words like evidence based and what evidence? Whose evidence? What Akil Bashir has put together, we're going to be participating with him and ameliorating this curriculum and improving it day to day, is an opportunity for us to be not only theoretical based, but more importantly, practitioner based. We're asking the people who are doing the work to give their input. We do not necessarily have to reinvent the wheel. This is about creating an all us we agenda and I believe this is really an indication of hope for our children, which really is our most precious resource. I've said this many times, if any of our children fail, a piece of our city fails. So I'm here to support this and look forward to building this hope agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, Bobby. Michael Carrion, our final public speaker on this matter, Michael Carrion.
Yes, my name is Michael Carrion and I also support this. This is the kind of collaboration that has been needed for years. For years, we've had interventionists and we've had prevention, but for years, we've had them on two opposite ends, the police on one end and the interventionist on the other end, both pointing the finger at each other because they cannot sit down at the same table to reach the same goals. We're all here to try to prevent this before it happens, not look into it after it happens. Prevention is part of intervention and the intervention people that you see here in front of you, I commend them. I take my hats off to them because it is not an easy job to get out there in the streets and deal with some of these children. And I do say children because these are twelve, thirteen, fifteen-year-old kids that are, don't have a chance in life, but they will not look up to a person in a uniform. They will not speak to somebody who has not walked in their shoes. They will speak to somebody who understands them. And these gang interventions are to go between the police department and our youth, our troubled youth. So like I says, I take my hat off to them because on a daily basis, they have to deal with a lot of this work that is tough. And the new classes that they're taking, the new things that are out, I applaud them because you know what? Before, when I was doing this, it was go out there and do what you have to do and see what you can do. At least now, there's training so that we can educate both parties, the interventionists, the police, and the fire department. I take my hat off to you guys for this. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Cardenas?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. This topic here is a very important topic, something that's been talked about for many, many years, but finally, the first formal training recognized by the city has actually taken place this year. So with that, can, people probably assume they know why the police department's here, but give us your version of how you feel about this training and whether or not it's important or valuable. And then also, a lot of people probably are totally clueless as to why we have a representative of the fire department here, so can you please give us an explanation from the fire department's vantage point on why this is valuable? Or if you, actually, I shouldn't assume. Tell us whether or not you think it's valuable and how it works in the real world.
I guess I'll start. Commander Pat Gannon from Los Angeles Police Department Detective Bureau. The use of gang interventionists in, for violent gang crime is essential. And I think that over my experience, which has been thirty years as a police officer and nearly nine years as a command officer, working some very tough areas in South Bureau, has given me the ability to work with many of these individuals. And it wasn't a relationship that necessarily got off to a very good start. It actually was off to a rocky start. We were definitely working two different roads and we never came together. But in all honesty, the only way that we're going to reduce crime further than we've already reduced it, reduce violent gang crime more than it's been reduced here recently, is to embrace gang intervention and gang intervention in the city. There's great examples throughout the city, both in the Valley with the relationship that the Operations Valley Bureau has with community and schools and Blinkie Rodriguez and his program, down in the Harbor area with Toblerone Settlement House, and more recently in Operations South Bureau where I was assigned as we brought gang member, or gang interventionists to a table and worked through problems to try to resolve violent gang issues. Working together with gang interventionists, whether it's the police department or fire department, is essential and establishing set guidelines and set protocols to make that an effective operation is essential. And we've moved in that direction. We've had, from as far as on the police side, and I'll let Cooper talk about his experiences, but on the police side, we were responsible in South Bureau for 1,500 police officers that were assigned there. Over that time, we brought about 500 of them together with gang interventionists to talk strictly about gang intervention and how it relates and how will we respond to develop a relationship. Those types of issues of trying to push this down to the field level officer is critical for us. We're not close to being successful at that. We need a lot more training. We need a lot, a lot more emphasis in that particular area. But clearly, when I look at the proof in the pudding is that, as we talked this morning, we're twenty-seven fewer homicides this year to date than we were last year at this date. And we have dropped in homicides consistently over the last six years, if you want to go back that far. But I truly believe in my heart of hearts that without the effective use of gang intervention, that number would not be twenty-seven fewer than it was last year, that enforcement works and I think suppression works, but I also think there's an important part for intervention and that works also from my experience.
Now, before we move on to the fire department, now please answer this question. By fine tuning and having a better understanding of protocols, does that help the officers and the interventionists and the community as a whole when it comes to increasing safety, especially when it comes to the moment-by-moment situations at an incident?
Absolutely. I got an interesting story that I tell on a regular basis. We had an incident when I was the captain in Harbor Division and it was a gang murder. The victim was still at the scene, waiting for the coroner's office. There was a group of gang members that had gathered outside the tape and a gang intervention worker from Toblerone Settlement House was talking to these gang members as they're there. An officer instinctively walked up to the tape and told them to leave. You guys, don't hang around here. You have no good business here. Just, just take off and leave. The gang intervention worker turned to the officer and said, officer, isn't this the best place that they could be? If you know that they're here, they're not retaliating, they're not creating another incident. And the officer paused and says, keep them here as long as you want and talk to them. It's that kind of a relationship that we really need to push. It's those kind of recognition that the intervention workers have a role and play an important part. And so that helps public safety. That continues, if the intervention is doing their job well, we will solve that initial gang crime, that violent act. If the gang intervention worker is doing their job well, it will keep us from having to investigate ten additional shootings. And that's really where, from a police department standpoint, it's about saving lives and that's a, that's critical.
So you just gave an example where it could actually, effective intervention, effective participation and cooperation actually could realistically reduce violence tenfold?
Absolutely. Had that officer been successful in chasing those individuals away, as angry as they were over the incident, there's no telling what kind of retaliation they would have sought out.
Thank you.
Fire Department?
Yes, sir. Councilman Cardenas, members of the city council, my name is Kwame Cooper. I'm a member of the Los Angeles Fire Department. I'm here on behalf and representing Fire Chief Barry. And with regard to your two questions, sir, you asked about why is this training important and you also alluded to protocols. We as firefighters see this training as essential and critical and also we see that the role of the interventionists being a critical part of the service that we provide on a daily basis. Approximately thirteen times a day, someone calls 911 and they say shots fired. And as first responding firefighters and paramedics, our job is to get there quickly so that we can provide medical service to individuals that might be at risk. And consistent with our philosophy, which we began in 1995 around community-based fire stations, it's critically important that firefighters at those fire stations develop a active relationship to be involved in issues that are affecting the communities that we serve, particularly social issues. And we can do that in a proactive way. One of the things that we've been able to do, and I'll speak specifically in response to the city council's motion, is as Commander Beck alluded to, I'm sorry, Commander Gannon alluded to, is to begin to meet with LAPD under the leadership of Chief Beck to begin to work out those protocols that affect first responders like firefighters and police officers because it's important for us to be in alignment when we respond to these violent incidents, but then also to use the opportunity to include interventionists in how we mitigate that situation. Oftentimes, we're asked to bring order to something that's chaotic and it happens very quickly. And so we're, we're very happy with regard to the training that we have been engaged in with Maximum Force, meaning the fire department, who Chief Barry entered in a partnership, a voluntary partnership with Mr. Bashir, who is the president of Maximum Force, to design training for first responders. And we refer to it as our first responder street survival training. We've been very fortunate to initiate that training, which began this year. It targets all first responders, firefighters in the South LA and Crenshaw community. And in Phase One, which was completed in March, our goal was to, under the leadership of Mr. Bashir, it was to and completed bringing the interventionists together and train them in what our protocols are as firefighters when we show up. And I cannot begin to tell you all the stories that came out of that because once the interventionists really understood what we do, then there was a better understanding about things that they could help us with before it begins to get a little chaotic. And so that turned out very well. And then we also were happy to have Sergeant... And then we also were happy to have Sergeant Woodall from LAPD, who has been representing the police department in these matters, and he's played a very critical role in representing the police department in his training. So we completed Phase 1. Phase 2, we just completed, sir, that was done up at our Frank Hodgkins Memorial Training Center, and we had over a three-day period, over 450 firefighters that went through Phase 2 training. We also had Chief Barry and Chief Rader attend each of the sessions to kick it off, just to really emphasize the importance of this, as well as representatives from LAPD, and I failed to mention, representatives from the gang intervention community. And we spent three days going through the strategical and tactical considerations that Mr. Bashir's firm was providing for firefighters with regard to responding to these types of incidents, and also began to look at ways of tightening our protocols with the police department as we respond. So that's been completed. And in Phase 3 of the overall training program, will begin at the first of the year, where we will then bring the interventionists and the company officers from South LA and the Crenshaw Community together to begin to deepen the relationship that we see as critical, because it is that face recognition that's important when we show up and we have someone there that can help bring order to some of the things that could be occurring during that particular moment. And as much like we do in an incident command situation, if I could use that as an example, where oftentimes, the police department and the fire department will bring other agencies together to look at a potential scenario and begin to work out how we are going to relate to each other, when and if that happens. And so, it's with that type of ICS format that we are beginning to feel and see the successes of involving the interventionists in our application of service delivery when we respond to violent incidents. And as Chief Barry's intention to, once all of this is completed, is to look at it, evaluate it, and be able to come back to city council with some very solid recommendations about lessons learned and where we could begin to expand this pilot program citywide.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Bashir. What is your involvement in this training, and where did this training come from, and what is it today?
Well, Councilman Cardenas, members of the city council, I'm honored to be here. The training, and I have to give you your accolades, as well as Councilman Weston for being a major part of this from day one. The training basically was initiated because, as has been said time and time again, well, gang interventionists, who I hate to use that oxymoron, the people we train are community interventionists who happen to have specialized knowledge in reference to gangs. It's much broader than gang intervention. It's about being able to deal with crisis unilaterally across the board as they relate besieged communities. But you were instrumental, quite a few other of the council people were instrumental, excuse me, in the initiation predicated on the fact that we kept hearing professionalism, standards, protocol. This is what was lacking supposedly in the intervention community, which I would have to say, to a large degree, was lacking. So the concept was to really create a professionalized group of individuals who had the expertise, the wherewithal, the know-how, the ability, and foremost, the discipline to be able to tactically go into situations and set up infrastructural protocol in terms of how we deal with those things. I also have to give my hats off to the LAPD, who were instrumental in bridging the flexibility, as well as the Sheriff's Department. We had a collaboration of LAPD, sheriffs, the City Attorney's Office, Red Cross, Pete Carroll from BetterLA, and quite a few others who were part of this overall training.
Was the DA's office involved in any way?
Yes, the DA's office also was involved. They actually were afforded the opportunity.
Public defender's office?
Police defender's office, thanks for that correction.
How about probation?
Probation also, thanks for those corrections. And in the concept in bringing all these entities to the table, we did probably 80% of the training. Those entities was to provide their expertise, as well as create this unilateral relationship to where the more knowledge that was brought to the table would afford the interventionist the flexibility of seeing with a much broader vision. And that was accomplished. And I really want to say, my hats off to the 47 interventionists who graduated. We had 17 warring neighborhoods who came to a six-week... Excuse me, a 16-week comprehensive intensified program, where they were trained, to where they were drilled, and they performed outstanding. And we have neighborhoods now that were shooting at each other before walking in that room, actually creating and having viable relationships to operate, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. But I want to go back to...
Excuse me, before I forget, how many millions of dollars did the city of Los Angeles put into this training?
Wow.
You can be blunt. I don't remember us passing a motion on the council floor allotting money to this training. We did not. So formally, the city did not pay for this training. This training was designed by Maximum Force and all the related parties that contributed to it, correct?
This training, the city provided nothing to this training economically, resource-wise, with the exception of a couple of individuals as inclusive of yourself.
And the facility?
Okay? But no, this was... And let me really state that. See, doing this work, and real gang intervention work, this is not about setting yourself in a position to be paid for the next 20 years. This is about a commitment that people who understand the complexity of what's going on in these communities have the heartfelt passion to go out there and do this work, because they feel a mandated responsibility to save these communities. So let me just set the record straight on that. We've got people like Blinkie and Bobby from CIS, we got Alex from Homey Onitos, we've got individuals who have done tremendous work without any resource mechanism, and who will continue to do that based on the need. But I think that where the city plays an extremely important part. You've been asking for professionalism, you've been asking for trained individuals who understand the protocol. Well, we've got that. We've got 47 individuals who are experts, and I will put them up against anybody doing this work out there.
Now, this training, was it by and large designed by professors, or was it by and large designed by practitioners?
It was designed by my company, who has been doing street intervention work for almost 40 years, since 1969. We have trained probably three-fourths of the gang intervention groups in the city throughout the nation.
Which university gave you your PhD?
I think that was called the University of the Streets.
Okay, so you don't have one of those formal academic PhDs, but you do have how many years of street-level experience of being and becoming and providing service as an interventionist? About how many years of that do you have?
Well, we can go back to 1969, so I would put it at probably about 39.
One of the reasons why I bring that up, council members, is because we have to be very, very careful as a city that when and if we do decide to pour resources into a much more formal initiative like this, that we not get fooled into thinking that if we get a document or some kind of training program that has a bunch of PhD's names on the bottom, that we not be fooled into thinking that that is either good or bad. It just is what it is. But the fact of the matter is, what's unfortunate in life is if you go to the supermarket and you see a product that says organic, you can pay two, three, four, five times as much for that organic material. Yet at the same time, when it comes to these kinds of programs, when we see PhD on it, which in my opinion is not organic, we end up wanting to pay four, five times as much, but it doesn't necessarily mean that we're actually getting something that is usable, that is practical, that is appropriate, and that it actually will save lives. So I just wanted to make that statement, because this issue is... This is about us understanding what happened on this particular courses and the fact that it's a pilot. But the fact of the matter is, as Commander Gannon just pointed out, we cannot go back to a place in time as a city is where we do not appreciate, respect, and understand, and participate with intervention, if we want to reduce crime, if we want safer streets, if we want less dead bodies. We can't do that. So this is a very important moment for the city of Los Angeles, for us to understand, are we or are we not going to engage, fortify, and provide an opportunity and an atmosphere for us to have intervention protocols, training certifications, professionalism of intervention work out on the streets? I apologize that I had to make that statement in the middle of what you were saying, Mr. Bashir, but the thing is, we are... They only give a certain amount of time on each item, and I'm already going over my allotted time.
No problem, sir.
If you could close on the most important things you want to get across to this council.
Well, real quick, I just want... My hats off to Chief Barry and the fire department for understanding, as well as realizing the need for this. I think there's been a massive collaboration between the police, the fire, the intervention specialists, and other city agencies because of the realization to push this forward. I think what we must do, no, we have to do, we have to bring the individuals who have the true expertise, who could rally up the individuals. Those 17 neighborhoods came together based on relationship building, based on the fact that they felt that it was something in that institute where they were going to benefit. And also, I would leave on this, I think as we professionalize and put forth, we have another class of 150 starting in November, we got to scale that down, as we train and put forth and bring these individuals with this degree of expertise that you, the city, has asked for, we must make resources available for them now that they have done their part. The city must do their part to make sure that these individuals know that they're appreciated, that they will be taken care of to that degree, because they've done what the city has asked, they professionalize themselves. And I want to say, all the individuals that graduated from the institute, they're all certified. They have five levels of certification, as well as all being certified in CPR.
Is there any conceivable reason that any one of you could think of that a true interventionist should not or would not take a course like this? Is there anything that comes to mind, that there's something about how special they are, how different they are as their kind of intervention, that they wouldn't benefit and/or grow as an interventionist from this course?
Councilman, if I may, not only should or will an interventionist gain from the experience of the training, but so will firefighters.
So that person, the interventionists, actually contribute to the benefit of the firefighters or officers or officials who are at the training as well?
Absolutely, sir. It is just absolutely critical, consistent with Chief Barry's philosophy, that we as firefighters engage in socio-economic issues that affect our community, and we should not wait for a crisis to occur to be on the front end. So therefore, as we build these relationships with the interventionists, there is a tremendous amount that we could learn from them as firefighters, which will also improve our service delivery capabilities, and also will enhance firefighter's safety. So without a doubt, sir, it's absolutely critical training.
Thank you very much, gentlemen, and I'll close with this. I think it's important for us to understand that this is a perfect example of how, when we don't look at the world as just black and white, when we start to look at the world for what it is. It's about relationships of community, it's about relationship with law enforcement, it's about relationship with committed individuals who are willing to put their lives on the line even though they don't have a formal recognized certificate to their name. It's that kind of relationship that we need to build in the city of Los Angeles if we are truly, truly going to get down to the bottom of reducing dramatically the crime and the violence and the deaths when it comes to certain communities in our city. So thank you very much.
Can I just say one thing in closing?
Thank you, Mr. Cardenas.
I'm sorry. There's been outstanding officers who have created outstanding relationships, not only from the command structure, but Curtis Woodall, who's been instrumental, Mark Darrell, and also from the Sheriff's Department, Ray Bracini, and a few others. And I think that is what it's going to take, stepping out of the uniforms and understanding the work that needs to be done. Also, private entities like Pete Carroll and BetterLA, who have been instrumental. So I just wanted to make sure they got their accolades.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Madam President. I first want to thank our colleague, Councilman Cardenas, for his yeoman work in the committee. He literally pounds out many of the issues, sometimes by himself, so I commend you, councilmember, and your work. With colleagues, as we hear the level of passion from our speakers who've come forward, and we hear the commitment from our officers in front of us, I just want to let you know that what we are witnessing is a cultural shift in how this city is looking at our youth. We're witnessing a cultural shift in how the fire department and the police department are willing to accept a level of responsibility by those, or instinctually, just by appearance, we would tend to distrust, given the stereotypes that have evolved over the past decades. But I can tell you, colleagues, that in Northeast, I've seen many gang interventionists put their life on the line during some very troubled times, when we have shooting incidents, when we have the kinds of violent actions that most people run away from, they are running towards. And they do it without any protection, they do it without any firearms, they do it because they want to make a difference in changing the way our youth are growing up. So I wanted to ask the officers here, as we continue down this process, we have now a format by which we talk about protocol, improving communication, and how we engage the gang interventionists. What other levels of support do you see in the horizon that can accentuate, if not move, this cultural shift to be much more, how can I say, real for the folks on the street? Is there anything that you can... And I'm putting you on the spot, but is there anything out there that you feel we could be doing to enhance this movement, this cultural shift, in how we address the needs of our community? Thank you.
Councilman, I think that's occurring. I think that there has been a tremendous amount of support. It's a process by which I think we're building each day. For example, we're working on a process by which we get better information from LAPD to the gang interventionists. And what's the best way of doing that? All the command officers in the city, for the police department, carry BlackBerry telephones. We know within minutes if there's a shooting incident that occurs anywhere in the city. The idea from Chief Beck is to make those BlackBerry notifications available to our gang interventionists, so setting into a process or a protocol in which we notify people. I think your continued support from a police department standpoint needs to be included. We talked a little bit about training, and Bashir has great training, but I would encourage the city to continue that training. Much like the fire department and the police department, training is really the backbone of what we do. We spend a tremendous amount of time on training, and that has to be pushed forward also into this process too. And the more that we see that, I think the more professional the intervention organizations will become, the interventionists themselves will become, and the more professional that becomes, the better accepted it becomes. And I think it's just a win-win for everybody.
Thank you.
Councilman, as I think about that question, my first notion is just to say, thank you for being supportive, because we are on an unprecedented path, of which we're real confident that positive things are going to come out of that. So thank you for that. We will have a much clearer answer with regard to support as we complete the pilot program that we're currently doing, with some solid evaluation and recommendations out of that. But the one thing that I would like to see, and I know this is consistent with Chief Barry, is once we vet all of this out, that we look at, how do we expand this to other neighborhoods? How do we expand this type of collaboration between this three-pronged approach, as you discussed in the Ad-Hoc Committee, to other communities that could benefit from this collaboration and this service delivery system that we're building? I would ask that you be open to that as we work our way down the path of getting this stuff completed and also institutionalized.
You know, we have individuals like Enrique Hurtado from ASIC Fire Crew, ASIC Rising, and these are strong individuals who've been there for at least the past 12 years that I'm aware of. Are these the folks that we can encourage to move in the direction that you're going to make sure that everyone's on the same page?
Absolutely. Yes, sir. We would certainly invite that from the fire department.
Great. Thank you, sir. Thank you for your hard work, both of you, sir.
Yes, thank you.
I would just like to add to that, and I would have to agree with both Commander Gannon and Chief Cooper, but really emphasizing Captain, excuse me, Commander Gannon's point, ongoing training. And I do need to say, we're not the only training entity out there. There's other people that are attempting to provide constructive, outstanding work, and they also need to be applauded. I think we just have to provide the training that is really going to professionalize, and that's a key term, professionalize the interventionists to do the work they're doing, congruently building the relationship to where they're respected and also are an asset to the communities and the emergency responding agencies in which they engage with. I think as long as we do that, and I think meetings like this is so imperative, and that's why...
that's why I applaud the whole city council for having the ear to listen, that means that possibly we can move this forward and get the success we need.
Well, it can't happen alone, as you well, no. I know the leadership, Chief Bratton and Chief Berry and Chief Beck and yourselves, who've been in the trenches and have learned from experience, what are the best lessons learned, and how we can embrace this positive energy in a way in which we can tear down the stereotypes, and actually look at human beings for who they are, and move forward in a much more positive way, and look for this continued shift in our cultures and actually create a whole new environment, and I believe you're going to have a strong support from this council. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Our next speaker is Mr. Rosendahl, followed by Mr. Labange.
Yeah, good morning, gentlemen. First of all, thank you for your commitment to this. It's a very serious issue to get the protocols right, so that people can see an intervention worker as part of the solution. I must tell you candidly that when we've had killings in my district, sometimes people wonder the intervention worker's role in all of this, and how does that person interact? We've had two killings in the last month, okay? We had a man by the name of Mr. Williams, who was with the bounty hunter group, who went over to Mar Vista Gardens, which is a six-hundred-family complex, and was identified as a bounty hunter by an alleged shooter who homicide and killed him, who was obviously from the Culver City Boys. We don't like to mention names of gangs, but the truth is, when we get the call from the intervention worker telling us exactly what happened, we know they're feeling the pulse of the community. A week and a half later, right there in Venice, on Abbot Kenny, where we had a festival, three hours later, Mr. Pacheco was gunned down in front of a bar, right there in front of a hundred people. And that again was a V-13, we saw internal fight, okay? And then, just about two years ago, Augustine Contreras, coming out of Venice High School, was gunned down by the Shoreline Crips, okay? So, you know, we're in a tough spot. We've had issues in Oakwood, issues in the Mar Vista Gardens. In fact, I'm so upset with the federal government right now, they have suspended mail delivery to my six-hundred families, and they're not getting their mail, because they refuse to go in there. They're blaming it on incidents, which isn't the reason, they just want to cut some costs, and I'm furious, Maxine Waters is involved, the mayor's involved, we still don't have mail delivering to my constituents. So this is a serious set of circumstances, even in the eleventh district, which the mayor did not put in his zones. And that's why my community, especially the Venice Two Thousand Group, are fighting for funds, and I'm going to be strongly supporting them on fighting for those funds, because they need that intervention prevention money. And they represent a collection of Latinos and African-Americans who are moving forward. So a couple of quick questions. The academy that you're doing now, the protocols that you're establishing now, this is a work in progress, right?
Right, but, and it's actually the Institute. We've been training for over forty years. We train internationally, we're vital intervention specialists. So the protocol, the structure, et cetera, no, it's not thrown together. This has been done universally. What we've done, excuse me, what we've accomplished is a tailored approach to deal with gang interventionists, as well as Fire Department personnel, et cetera, specifically tailored for that environment and for their given needs. And that's why this is so applicable in a variety of neighborhoods, because what we have done is create a generic blueprint, a generic fundamental of SOPs, which can be flexed in each given neighborhood based on their set of circumstances. And that's usually done with an evaluation, risk factors established, so we know specifically the modes of assault that we're up against, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera.
So then, when an incident happens, a homicide happens, and Fire Department, you're out there in a minute and a half, and there's an intervention worker there, does this protocol help the relationship between you and the intervention worker?
Yes, sir. What we see is, one of the most critical steps is for those officers, for those firefighters to know by name and by face who these interventionists are before it happens. And if and when it happens, that when firefighters show up and the interventionist steps forward to assist the company officer, for instance, with crowd control. Quite frankly, with the great job that LAPD often does with crowd control, it sometimes is overwhelming initially because things are just happening so quickly.
Right.
And as firefighters and paramedics, we're trying to get in there to provide the medical care. So just as an example, the interventionists would be able to help in that regard. And what builds that is some of the respect and trust that went in before the incident happened, between the first responder and the interventionists. And we're very confident that this philosophy and this model will work, because we've seen it work before in our department. We had the opportunity back in 1995, working with Bo Taylor, Unity One, when they first started, and myself as a young captain, working out of Fire Station Sixty-Eight with Unity One and Maximum Force at that time.
Right.
Where we were doing a lot of work with youth. And because of the equity that went in upfront between building relationships between the firefighters and the gang interventionists, when this specific incident happened that I'm thinking about right now. It was a result of having respect and trust that went in ahead of time, that caused that incident not to go into a direction that was going to now become a risk to firefighter safety, because there were some threats that was made against firefighters with regard to what our protocols were.
Right, right, right at that moment.
Yeah, these gentlemen knew what our protocol was, so we had some equity that we could build on. So we're very confident that as we continue to work with the Police Department and Maximum Force and all the intervention agencies, that we can do a lot of good in this area.
I really appreciate, and I ask the chief there, the LAPD, one of the concerns I've heard, sort of anecdotally, is that some of the LAPD people have skepticism and credibility issues with some of the intervention workers. I mean, maybe some of it is based on an intervention worker has got the pulse going on, and people just wonder where they're really coming from. I have experienced that myself. How does the LAPD, going forward, interface with the intervention workers so that it is a win-win?
Well, first of all, recognizing that there's value in what they do is the number one, and coming from the command staff, that we see value in this is very important. It is true, there is a lot of skepticism on the part of especially young officers that are out in the field. You know, and I was there, too. I don't want to say that I was any different than that as a young officer. I felt that, you know, I had a role, and what my role was the most important role out there was as far as suppression goes. But I think over a period of time, and as we move forward with training that we have begun, and we have actually, working with the Sheriff's Department on joint training for police officers, both on the sheriff's side and our side, to understand and recognize the value of intervention. The role still between interventionists and the Fire Department will be different than the role between interventionists and the Police Department. The interventionists can never be seen as an agent of the Police Department. They don't work for us, they don't work, all we do is cooperate together. And if at some point an intervention is seen as working for the Police Department, then their ability, or the term that I like to use, and I've been learned by or schooled by the interventionists, is their license to operate is compromised. And so my job is to just respond to those particular incidents, work with a qualified interventionist that can help us calm that particular incident down, and then work to keep retaliation from occurring. If retaliation does not occur, I am absolutely confident that we're going to solve and hold responsible the person that committed that violent act that brought us together.
Yeah.
If we have to respond to ten additional incidents and try to figure them out also, all at the same time, that's not going to occur. So our role really with interventionists, to really work together, allow them to do their job that will allow us to focus on that particular incident that brought us there. But getting all of our officers on board, getting everybody there, is still a work in progress. But we've been working at it now for a couple of years, very diligently, using intervention workers to come in and help train our younger officers to accept that.
See, one would be also beautiful, I'll be right with you, is like in my district, Pacific Division is the one that seems to have most of the issues with Mar Vista Gardens and also with Oakwood, that at a certain point, the intervention workers, some twelve or fourteen, sit down with the officers on the beat, who are literally in the same geography, and work out their personal protocol issues. So it has to get down to that level, right?
Absolutely. And there have been some interesting--
Mr. Rosendahl, if you could press your button again, please.
There have been some, there are some issues there that need to be resolved, and we've worked at that, it just needs continuing effort.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Labange is next, and while he's coming to the mic, I just want to urge everyone to stay within their time, trying to be--
Madam President, I want to thank those at the center table, I want to thank those who came down and spoke. I think everyone was very articulate. Also, Mr. Reyes, I think you said it right, there is a cultural change, which is a possibility to make great change in how we see the world and how we could respond to the world. Just last Sunday, I was at the AIDS Walk, and they spoke of the thousands of people who died of AIDS in the last generation here. And listening to the conversation today, I can think of the thousands of people who needlessly died from gang violence. All of this is a step forward, a step forward in doing what we all want, have a neighborhood that we could enjoy and love, have an opportunity, and being able to live in a city that you can be proud of. So I just want to thank everybody for being involved and coming down, and their personal compassion that they express. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. And again, I want to urge all members to stay within the timeframe, because we are at risk of losing a quorum. Mr. Huesar is our next speaker.
Thank you very much, Madam President. I simply want to just get up and thank Councilmember Tony Gardenas for the leadership he's shown in his committee, working with community members who have been involved with intervention and LAPD and others, to come up with a model that I think is really not only going to make a difference in our streets, but many people in the country are looking at, because as we work to reduce gang violence, to reduce the number of young people joining our gangs, a lot of words are thrown around at times. Councilmember Tony Gardenas, as I've sat in that committee with him for the last year, is you're really now beginning to define the different components dealing with reducing gang violence and young people reducing gang members. We've often said, prevention intervention, but what does that mean? And now, as we move forward to really hold people accountable for doing the work, we've separated all these different components, prevention, intervention, reentry, and as we do more intervention, what we've come up with is a real model on measuring the performance that we will get once we see it. So I think it's tremendous if people had sat through those meetings, you really get to get a better understanding of the important work that the people who do this work that they're doing, the danger they put themselves in, I know it's probably mentioned earlier. When we held one of the Ad-Hoc Committee meetings in my district, and you heard from former gang members, parents who lost children to gang violence, and they saw the work we are doing now, the important work that our interventionists were doing there, many people thanked the interventionists, because they not only provided the support that was needed, but many times had prevented more violence from escalating. They're the ones that go out there and calm things down when they have to. And this model that we have, I think is gonna, you're gonna see this propping up throughout the United States in large urban centers, and people copying what we've done here, because they think it's going to show some great results. So thank you all for the hard work you put on this, and particularly, it comes from your Tony Gardenas. See, when we talk about changing policy in the city, this is something that's taken time, but it's going to have some great payouts at the end.
Thank you. Mr. Wesson.
Madam President, I move the previous question.
All right, we've had a request to move the call of questions, so let's put that to a vote.
And then, Madam President, this needs ten votes.
All right, would you please open the roll on that? Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Thank you.
And now, Madam President, that matters before council.
What's our next item, Madam Clerk?
That is before council now, the vote on item number thirty.
All right. End of the debate, okay, open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Very good. Thank you, everyone. Next item.
Next item, Madam President, is item number fifteen, and that was called special by Councilmember Garcetti.
Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you very much. If I could ask the Department of Building Safety and City Attorney to come forward on this item, please. Colleagues, we have before us a motion that I offered that came forward from the first digitized billboard that was a swap-out in my district, very close to Mr. Labange's district as well, in Silver Lake, on Silver Lake Boulevard, and the public outcry that followed from the changing of the face of that and the disruption that was felt by members of the community, drivers and others who were transiting through there. And this billboard that was part of the modernization from the court settlement that we had, it was very clear to us that a number of other council members have been experiencing these at a much higher volume than my own district. But as the first one, and one of two now, that I believe that are in the district total, I felt that it was very important for us to get our head around and get out in front to see what we could do to give back some control to the communities, to our neighborhoods, especially in residential areas, to make sure that we're smart about where these go, if at all, in the city, where we can put them to make sure that the community actually can say that this is something that if it wasn't a billboard and was a bright light of a store, for instance, we would have protections, probably under environmental law and the state and other mechanisms. But what can we do to look at and to try to move forward on returning that balance back to the community and back to the residences? Couple of things that I want to just straight go into the questions, because I know we have limited time here, and we had a long conversation just before on our previous item, but I do want to just give a little bit of the timeline right here, which is that, I know we're going to have to take some public comment, I'll look forward to hearing that in just a second, but I want to ask some questions before, because it may inform some of the public comment that we hear as well. We introduced this motion October first, along with the motion that we did on the proposed conversion of our Amber Alert signs on the freeway. And on October fourteenth, we had testimony in Plumb for notification and review process to where these changeouts and conversions occur. And then the City Planning Commission, I have spoken very closely and worked together to see what sort of mechanisms can we have to kind of halt things where they are right now, so we can get out in front of what is happening. I know the City Attorney's Office also had some ideas there, to make sure that we can do our due diligence and give communities as well the tools that they need to be able to know where these are being proposed, how they're going in, are they legal in all places, do we have any restrictions on time, place and manner as to where they go? So I know the CPC raised a host of concerns, but first I wanted to just talk to the Department of Building and Safety in terms of the context of this right now. Where we are, I know in a letter that was dated May two thousand and eight from the department, stated that the fee analysis had been forwarded to the CLA, CAO and City Attorney for review and approval, and to begin drafting the new ordinance. Has there been any progress since the May two thousand and eight report? What is the current status, and when can we anticipate having an accurate database of signs? You know, I know community members that are building it more quickly than the city is, and it's time for us to start, first and foremost, with full information. I've talked with a couple of the companies who have given, they say, the information of where all their billboards are, I don't know if that's universal with all the different companies, but where are we and what's happened since May two thousand and eight? If you could hold my time, please.
Let me just explain that for the--
Will you just identify yourself for the record, please?
I'm sorry.
Will you give your name for the record?
Yes, my name is Hector Buitrago, and I'm the chief of the Court Enforcement Bureau in the Department of Building and Safety. For us to start the annual, now the tri-annual inspection program, we do need a new ordinance that's going to establish the fee and the conditions of the inspection program, and we have to have the staffing approved. We are working currently, and continue to do so, with the City Attorney and the CLA and the CAO, to do the necessary reports and studies of the fee and developing the ordinance. We are working together, and we have made progress.
So you're sure you have a working group right now that is working on that language?
Yes.
There's a couple of things you offered there. So, you know, in terms of the language of the ordinance, I assume the City Attorney's Office is working on that? Do you have all that you need to be drafting that? Is there more information you need from Building and Safety? Where is that right now in terms of the drafting?
David Michelson with the Office of the City Attorney. We're pleased to be here today and answer questions that you all may have. With respect to the Building and Safety Department's rollout of their off-site sign inspection program, the City Attorney's Office, the CLA, CAO are supporting the Department of Building and Safety. I think all of us are anxious to see that program rolled out as soon as possible. There is a resource issue that Building and Safety will be bringing forth to make sure they have the personnel and the people power to get the job done.
So is it the resource or is it the ordinance?
It's both. And there's also a fee structure that will be part of an ordinance that will establish a fee to be imposed upon billboards to help offset the costs and pay for the costs of the program. for the costs of the program. Um, care is being taken by Building and Safety with, in conjunction with, uh, CAO, CLA, and our office to make sure that fee is, uh, supportable and defendable. Because as you all may know, we have probably more than twenty-five active lawsuits brought by billboard companies against the city, and this, this ordinance, uh, and program needs to roll out, uh, in, in a wise, prudent fashion. Because if we find ourselves in court, we need to be able to defend it successfully. But, uh, I, I believe that, um, uh, we have all that we need, certainly to provide that support to Building and Safety.
So how long does a wise, prudent ordinance take, do you think? Because we work well with deadlines around here, and whether it's a question for Building and Safety or for yourself, I mean, I, I think that we owe it to certainly the policymaking body and to the public to have some idea of how long that is, because it's our job then to, to make sure we're meeting our deadlines. One of the common complaints has been, well, it takes so long. The fee should address the resources issue in terms of having the inspector. That's the point of the fee. Uh, that's what we had to make the nexus between. So, uh, what, what is a realistic time for us to be having, setting as a deadline?
And the City Attorney's Office agrees that a deadline is probably a prudent thing to, uh, to have happen. Um, I can't speak for the Department of Building and Safety. I know they're working hard at it because we, uh, work probably daily with them, along with the CAO and CLA, as to this program. But, uh, that question should be answered by, by the department that's responsible for rolling out the program.
What do you think?
Um, again, like, like the City Attorney stated, it involves several deformances, and, and we have to go through the city system, go through the city council, the proper committees, even the Civil Service Commission. Uh, I expect that the program can be established early next year.
Well, I'm, I'm sure Mr. Reyes is the Plum Chair, myself as Council President will be happy to schedule that as quickly as it's done. I mean, we have no issues in terms of the process on our end. Um, but if you say the beginning of, of next year, are we looking at, can we set a January thirty-first deadline?
Uh, I would think it's probably closer to March.
So that's kind of--
And, and again, this is, um, I think I'm being very aggressive with this schedule.
And, and tell me exactly what we need in that time. I mean, is there a problem on the nexus of exactly how much each inspector is going to cost? Because we know that information, right? We could calculate that today.
We are being extremely careful with our documentation, uh, because of the strong possibility of lawsuits, and, which is, uh, causing, uh, a little bit of delay. But, you know, going through council committees, and I know that that can be expedited, and we're trying to do everything we can to move as quickly as possible. I meet with the City Attorney, with the CLA, or the CEO almost on a weekly basis about this.
Well, I'd like to set a January thirty-first deadline. You can report back as to why we're not there yet in, by January thirty-first, but I think that would be more appropriate way of doing it rather than, uh, saying somewhere out in March. And let's see what we can do to hit that. If there's resource issues or whatever, again, I think you've heard many voices on this council, that this is, this is a high priority. And I think part of the reason why it's a priority is, without this inspection going on, um, it's much, and this is part of the reason the ICO, I think, was, uh, initially given a positive vote in the Planning Commission, is that people know it's much easier to play defense once we've stopped things from going up than it is, sorry, to play offense and stop things from going up rather than as defense once something is there. I mean, right now in Silverlake, and I appreciate having met with the, the owners of this billboard, the Clear Channel folks, they've dimmed it by two-thirds, they've lessened the hours, but I was very frank with them too. We'll have to see what public input is like. If, if the public then says, okay, this is less offensive to us now, or less intrusive to us than the seven-eleven sign, which is a hundred feet away, I will listen to that. But if they also say, this is still a huge distraction whenever that board changes digitally, if that's the main thing, which a lot of drivers and a lot of people are saying, um, you know, we need to be able to, to help them out there, and we need to see what we can do to change this situation. But in the meantime, if we can't get our heads around this, we can't begin to defend the communities from that onslaught of new ones that are coming up. And that's critically important to me. Um, in terms of the questions that were asked here too, um, what is the, the status of signed credits for Clear Channel and, and the other companies? And how many are outstanding, uh, right now, and how many have been used? Are you tracking that?
Uh, we are tracking them. Uh, I do not have, um, the exact number. Uh, I did not--
But that's what the motion asked for. Uh, we have the motion--
I was under the impression that we were going to be given time to report, uh, but, uh, there had been under one hundred used.
So, so just to be clear, I introduced this motion October first. It is now October twenty-second, and we don't, we don't have a mechanism to, in twenty-one days, be able to go, go one place and say we know how many credits are being used?
No, we do, and, and I'm sorry, I just didn't come prepared to do the report, but, uh, it, there has been under one hundred, uh, digital--
Well, that's pretty frustrating for us. I mean, this, when we, when we do motions, when we do the legislative process here, that's very clear. Um, you, you have a good department, and you have people who are here all the time monitoring city council. If you can't come prepared, this conversation isn't worth having. And, and for us, that's extremely frustrating. And, you know, when people ask, where, where is the holdup here? Is it the City Attorney's Office? Is it Building Safety? Is it council? There's plenty of blame to go around. I'm not gonna be the first to, to cast stones. I think we've, I've made some bad votes. There's been some bad votes here in council, but I'm trying to make things better right now, trying to correct things. But when we, if we aren't all on the same page, everybody asks, where's the conspiracy at city halls? Is it Building and Safety too cozy with the sign industry? Is it City Attorney is? Is it the council is? And all we can try to do is be as transparent as possible. But every time we don't do some basic work, it just reaffirms people's suspicions about, you know, whether city hall is serious about this. And, and I'm, I'm certainly serious, and so I'd like to see next time we have this, that we have the answers ready by the time you come here. Um, I, I don't think that's too much to ask for.
Not a problem.
Ms. Garcetti, your, uh, eight minutes over.
Okay. I will press my button again. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Rosendahl.
Yeah, um, if I could, before I speak, I would like to let my community people here, we're organizing an event this weekend, give them an opportunity to speak.
Do we want to open it up for public comment? We have a number of cards. If that's the will of the body, we will do that. Any opposition? Uh, how much time, Mr. Rosendahl?
Uh, how many, how many cards do we have? Yeah, i- if I could indulge my colleagues, I'd like to give them each two minutes so they could lay out the issues that we've been talking about.
Two minutes per speaker?
You think we'll lose a--
No opposition?
Okay.
Two minutes per speaker.
If we lose a quorum, then let's give them one minute.
One minute per speaker? One minute per speaker, okay. We will start--
Well, if you're gonna lose the quorum--
We will start with Zuma Dog.
Oh, no, if we could start with Dennis Hathaway and--
Well, wait, wait. I got, I got the cards here. Mr. Zuma Dog's not here. Arnold Sachs, we have a card from Arnold Sachs. And then, uh, that leaves us with, uh, four more. If you're here for that matter, hopefully you filled out a card.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Councilman Garcetti. Now you know how we feel in the public side. When we come and we ask for information, and we're greeted with Stonewall silence. You come and ask for a committee hearing, you come and ask for information, you don't, and, and not here. How many times do we come before the council? Getting in front? This is old news. The newspapers report that there's six hundred illegal billboards in the city of LA. How, getting in front of it on digital billboard? Like, this is a new type of, um, um, technology? Shouldn't this stuff have been discussed three, four, five years ago? When, when digital billboards first even started showing up, even probably earlier than that? So talk about being ahead of the curve or leading the charge. It's another case of leading the charge from behind, not leading the charge in front. And all too often, that's what the public gets.
Thank you, Mr. Sachs. Uh, our next speaker is Dennis Hathaway.
Uh, thank you very much. I was at a Plum Committee hearing in February, and, uh, these exact same questions were asked. I believe it was a motion by Councilman Weiss. When is the inspection program going to start? What is the status of it? Uh, and I have to say that I heard the exact same answers at that February meeting. It is now October. Um, we are in Council District eleven. We are going to have a, uh, we have organized volunteers to actually go out on Saturday, and we're going to inventory all the billboards in Council District eleven. We're going to photograph them, we're going to take note of their, um, document their condition, uh, their possible violation of permits, and we're gonna, uh, turn that over to the, uh, Building Department because we're frankly, we're tired of waiting. Uh, we don't want to wait till March or January. We're going to, we're going to do something now on our own, and, and, uh, hopefully it will have some effect. Thank you.
Thank you. David Ewing.
Good morning, councilmembers. David Ewing, uh, one-two-three-four Preston Way in Venice, a member of the Venice Community Coalition. I want to thank you for revisiting some of the issues raised by the disastrous legal settlement with Clear Channel, CBS, and Regency. Um, this was a deal made behind closed doors on advice of the city attorney, and it has rewarded these companies for breaking the law consistently. It's subjected the city to lawsuits from other sign companies. It has helped eviscerate the city's ability to regulate and derive significant revenues from signage, and it has subjected the voters to a sudden onslaught of digital graffiti without their consent. The question today is why you would go back to that same city attorney who is hopelessly compromised by over four hundred thousand dollars in contribute, contributions from the billboard industry, and whose advice in issue after issue regarding billboards has put you in this position of powerlessness that you find yourself in today. So fool me once, shame on you. Fool me twice, shame on me. But you guys are begging the fox to guard the--
Your time's up, Mr. Ewing. Thank you, sir. Laura Selagi.
Very good. Um, I'm Laura Selagi. I'm a member of the Venice Community Coalition. And just for you to know, there are over fifty digital billboards on the West Side at the present time. And the, uh, digital billboard conversion exception from zoning regulations and environmental review removes the public voice in planning. And the city charter says that the public has a say in planning and zoning issues. And I just want to also mention that my friend Mindy Taylor Ross lives a block and a half away from a digital billboard on Lincoln Boulevard, and she has this digital billboard blasting light of various intensities into her window twenty-four hours a day, and obviously at night, this is intolerable. And that is, if she moved, she might find the same problem elsewhere in the city. So, I mean, this is truly an environmental problem for the public. Thanks.
Thank you. Rick Monte.
Thank you, Rick.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but it isn't a bad politics to have business dealings with somebody you accept camp, campaign contributions from, whose hands are dirty here. Did you think you, we couldn't connect the dots? Everybody talks about the legality of this sign. I don't remember voting for it. What really fries me is that my neighborhood has been sold out by people who don't even know what it is. Well, does anybody from Clear Channel live in Silverlake? I don't think so. Well, I want to assure you, we're gonna keep on making noise, we're gonna keep on making phone calls, mailing and blogging until this piece of dreck is taken down. Well, I'm gonna go home and watch the Bonnie Hunt Show and fill my tank up with Chevron gas. Oh, come on, give us a break. People, Trump, money.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Rosendahl.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Appreciate the public comment. We put a motion in, my district did, I did, to catalog the assault my district has taken on billboards. In fact, we have more digital billboards, I would say. Maybe Mr. Weiss and I together are the big ones on it, but I can tell you, my district is over the top, over the top. And they popped up out of nowhere in the last year, out of nowhere. All of a sudden, they're everywhere. So we're going out Saturday. We're gonna have a hundred people at least on the street, okay? I'm gonna be there too. And I've met with Building and Safety, Hector, I met with some of your superiors, and we're expecting you guys to be with us in a pre-meeting ahead of time so that we gather the data appropriately. We don't want to wait anymore. We've had it. We've waited long enough. Nothing has happened. It's just a disaster. So you'll be with us. We're gonna catalog this stuff. We're gonna take pictures, we're gonna have addresses, and we're gonna be able to give it back. City Attorney, we want to move this as quickly as we can. We'll do it Saturday. We were last night in the Venice Neighborhood Council, they're all excited. Brentwood, the Palisades, Mar Vista, Westchester, the entire district is gonna be out there Saturday cataloging them. City Attorney, what can we do with that data so we don't wait another four to six, eight months as they continue to assault my, my district?
Uh, Councilmember Rosendahl, David Michelson, again with the Office of the City Attorney. I believe, as you indicated, you have had conversations with the Department of Building and Safety. Uh, as the building official, the Department of Building and Safety's job includes, um, uh, surveying, inspecting the billboards that are installed in the city of Los Angeles. I think the Department of Building and Safety spoke with you about what role the community could play, um, and what, uh, of, of value that that input from the community will provide to the Department of Building and Safety in doing their job. I will also tell you that, uh, two things if I might. This motion that's before you today, that would be adopted by you if you take a vote on it today, calls for both the City Attorney and for Building and Safety to report back in forty-five days. I can tell you, because this was introduced a few weeks ago, um, that we've already started to work on all the issues and all the questions that are raised here. We're working diligently on those questions, um, even though quite a few days remain before the forty-five days would run, uh, run. Um, I should also add that the City Attorney's Office, and I think many of you know this, uh, has indicated that it will, uh, transmit to both your council and to the Planning Commission this week, a recommended by the City Attorney interim control ordinance, which would provide for a moratorium for six months to give you all and the other city policymakers an opportunity through this moratorium to have no more activity on billboards, including conversion of digital billboards, additional conversion of billbo, billboards. This will give you all and the rest of the city, uh, policymakers an opportunity to revisit the regulatory framework that exists with respect to billboards and off-site signs, and to come up with, uh, a new regulatory framework to address concerns that are being raised, um, by you all and by the city residents. So we are trying to do everything we can from the City Attorney's Office to provide that breathing room with a moratorium if adopted by your council. Um, and then we will work actively with you, as we always have, uh, to see what new regulations could be put in place.
How quickly can we get to that point so that the moratorium goes in place? They're doing it on, every night. They're running around and turning them on. The next morning, I can see another digital billboard. When do you think that can go into effect?
We hope to transmit to you and to the, uh, Planning Commission today, the recommended, um, uh, interim control ordinance, which will provide for the six-month moratorium. And we will work with you all, uh, and the Planning Commission to move that through the city system as fast as possible. So if it is your desire to adopt such an ordinance, uh, it can take effect, and it would take effect on an urgency basis. So it would not be an additional thirty days even once you adopt it before it actually applies. But if you go forward with that and, and adopt an interim control ordinance with no exceptions, um, it, from our perspective in the City Attorney's Office, would require everyone in the city family to have their feet to the fire for that six-month period of time to come up with, uh, a new regulatory framework for off-site signs, including regulations, time, place, and manner, for where these conversions will take place from traditional, conventional signs to digital signs. Um, so it'll provide a roadmap and, uh, protections--
Okay, next question is, the horse is out of the barn in my district. What about those that have already flipped over, those that aren't even authorized? We have never had a catalog of how many billboards we have in our district. How will it deal with those billboards that I consider illegal?
Well, a- as the City Attorney's Office said in its letter, um, to the Planning Commission last week, that the survey and inspection program from Building and Safety is a critical component. We're as anxious as anyone to see that program move forward, no question about it. And as I indicated, I believe Building and Safety, CAO, CLA are all working hard to get that out the door. Um, as to those, uh, signs that are already in the ground, we're also looking as to what other tools that could be out there to address existing signs, including existing conversions. And that's, that'll be part of what we report back to you.
I appreciate it. And I'd like to ask you, Hector, how will you help us Saturday so that we don't have to wait six months, three months, oh, we don't have enough inspectors, all those lines? How do we actually move forward on Saturday, catalog it, and let the freeze happen? How will you help us?
Um, I mean, we, we can try and use the data provided by the neighbors, but, uh, of course, this has to be, uh, compared to whatever our records are, and that is where the time, uh, that we will have to spend on will be dedicated. But we can certainly use what they submit to us, but then we will have to do our own part of the verification to make sure that if we are writing somebody up because they have an illegal sign or illegally altered, that we can substantiate it with our records.
Fair enough. How long will that take? And can we expedite it? Can we assist you in that and accelerate it?
Uh, I wish, I wish somebody else could help us, but this is something that has to be done by our, you know, by Building and Safety personnel, but people with the expertise and the credentials and the authority to do--
Fair enough. Put your feet to the fire. Saturday, we get you every bit of our district. We're gonna be out there. There might be hundreds of us out there getting it. How long after you get it on Monday, can we expect some kind of verification?
Uh, it's hard to tell because I don't know how many signs we, we're going to provide. We have to check each one--
Sure.
--against our records and perhaps even do our own inspection before we can make a decision. The, uh, the inspection program citywide is scheduled to take three years. Now--
No.
How, how long would that take for CD eleven? Because I believe that's what you're asking for, for CD eleven alone--
Yeah, I put the motion in. I'm trying to move forward.
Uh, it's gonna be a proportional fraction of three years. Now, there is a lot more signs, I realize, in your district than in other districts. So it can be a, a several month process. I mean, I can't-- process. I mean, I can't, you know, I wish I could tell you it's take two weeks.
Okay. I just want to end it by saying this. We're going out there Saturday. There're going to be lots of people out there. I'd like you to report back within three weeks as to the progress of the data we've given you, so that we don't wait six more months or four more months. Within three weeks. Do I get that commitment?
Certainly.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendale. Mr. Labonge?
Madam City Attorney, is the data that they collect in the 11th district going to be legal for you to use?
Jerry Burge with the City Attorney's Office. As Mr. Patrago said, that information will have to be verified by Building and Safety, the experts for the city, to be used in any legal process.
I support your effort, but there's a form, and they did the same thing in the police department when they look at certain things. So, I just hope we give them the guidance, because all those volunteers, make sure they do it right. So, you could do that. Thing I wanted to ask here, every billboard has to have a building permit, right?
Correct.
Okay. Are there any ones you think that don't have a building permit?
Yes, there are some.
Okay, and they have to have power to run those digital signs in those satellites, right?
The digital, the digital signs, I am almost 100% certain that they all have permits.
You're 100% certain?
I said almost. I cannot be absolutely certain.
Because I would think, because I know sometimes people do things without permits in this city.
Yes, and, and some of the older boards...
And some things that are done wrong should be corrected, you know?
Some of the older boards don't have permits, but not all, not all of them have lights.
But I think we should really look at that to see what's going on. Do we know your counterpart at Water and Power who works on that issue there? It just doesn't happen. They just don't run an extension cord from a window. Have you talked to any of them?
We have talked to Water and Power to get some of their data, yes.
I understand, but I mean, to look at this here. What I think that people feel is they feel there's an assault. I like art, okay? I like some billboards. I don't like some that are offensive. I don't like lit boards. When the public speaker spoke about her friend in an apartment, that could be very traumatizing for them. And so, I think there's a need to look at this here. People know when they walk down, and I haven't been to Las Vegas in many years, but if you walk down in Las Vegas, there's nothing but neon that's banging at you all the time. You know that's happening. In a neighborhood, they don't expect that to happen. They absolutely don't expect that to happen. And also, we all remember what a Coke truck used to look like. Now, it's a big super truck. We all remember what a billboard used to look like. Now, it's a much bigger sign. You know, they're, they're stretching that, which is causing great pain for many people in the community on this here. The health problems that occur here, I have another question for the city attorney. If there's an accident on the corner of Beverly and Western Avenue, and there's a billboard on there, and someone says, "The billboard took my eyes away from the road," what liability does the city have? You can hold my time, Mr. President. Hey, you ran that time very fast. How much time did you give me? That wasn't three minutes, and I asked for to hold my time.
Well, Mr. Labonge, you're down to 12 seconds.
Councilmember Labonge, David Michelson with the City Attorney's Office. When accidents occur, they're very fact-specific. If the person who was in the accident alleges that they were distracted by a sign, that person may end up suing the billboard company. They could potentially try to sue the city because the city permitted it.
I know. Has that ever come to us yet?
I, I've never heard of such a lawsuit. It's, I can't tell you there haven't been, but certainly I'm not aware of such a lawsuit. There could be a law, such a lawsuit in the future. The city would defend such a lawsuit. The city has many immunities under state law clearly, and many of those would be applicable. But every accident is so fact-specific, I can't really speculate in terms of how anyone might play out.
And another issue, two members were talking about, I mentioned, pull-down banners that block windows where people can't get out in old buildings. Everybody's putting signs, signs, everywhere's a sign. So, we have to be aggressive on this issue here to do what I think the people of this city want, a balanced approach. Not everybody wants it like Irvine where there's nothing in there, and there's no billboards, but there's a balance that needs to be taken place there, and also for the safety issue of these pull-down banners that cover windows. I want to ask the fire department to do something about that because it scares me as well. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Labonge. Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. How many inspectors do we have to do this job?
Actually, to do the annual or the periodic inspection program, we do not have the staff. We started the program in 2002, and then we were stopped by order of the court, and because of that, the staff that had been approved was cut.
So, you don't have staff to do this job?
We do not have the staff to do the periodic inspection program. That is correct.
So, all the work that the citizenry is going to do in District 11 is going to fall on whom?
It would have to be done by the current staff.
Permanent staff?
Yes.
Now, you're saying permanent staff can't do the job?
Well, they already are doing, I mean, they have plenty of work. This would be additional work that they would have to do along with the other work.
Okay, okay. This is what we need to do, right? I'm really frustrated. I've, I've been saying this for the past year and a half. Everything's been said that needed to be said. I just need for us, in Plum, in two weeks into November, before the break begins, before everyone starts going on their vacation time, a list of all the motions that have been presented to this, to this department, and a status on each one. I need to know if it's still in the city attorney's office, if it's in your department. I need to know where they're at, and we need to put together a real strategy on how we're going to address this. Now, colleagues, this means that if they come back and say, "We don't have the personnel for this," then we have to be ready to step up and say, "Do we move personnel within the department to achieve these goals with X amount of time?" We need to take away all the reasons why it doesn't get done. And so, about how many motions? I, I can think of four to five motions off the top of my head that have already been put forth on this issue. How many are you aware of?
There's probably around a dozen, but for information, many of those motions are the city, the Department of City Planning is the lead agency.
So, okay, so you're authorities of the planning department?
That's in the motion.
Okay. So, colleagues, we'll do that, but as a result of that motion, as a result of that hearing in Plum, the direction could be that we need to allot staff to complete these functions, to get some level of closure on how we deal with these billboards, and they're legal, illegal, and move on, because right now, we've been just going in this big circle for all these different reasons, and we need to close that loop and move on. So, Councilman Garcetti, I believe this will be a friendly amendment to your motion that we have.
I second it.
A friendly amendment to your motion that it's not only the motion you put forth, but a status on all the motions to know what it takes to get all of the job done, so we know what type of personnel they need, because right now, they're saying all they have is, is their permanent personnel, but they don't have the personnel to do this extra job. And that's something we need to clarify and, and see if we can even move within, either within their department, or we move staff to make it happen. But we have to get that function fulfilled. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Mr. Weiss?
I think it's me pressing Mr. Weiss's button because he was kind enough to give me his, his desk here. First, I just want to welcome a great leader from the state. Daryl Steinberg is here with us, who has done an amazing job on all sorts of issues, from mental health care to other progressive things. It's always an honor to have you, and will be leading our state senate as one of the most important state leaders we have. It's an honor to have you here, and thank you for joining us. You know, colleagues, I'll, I'll wrap up right now and gladly accept that motion from Mr. Reyes. You know, we get these answers back. This is just one neighborhood, and we can multiply this probably by another 90 neighborhoods that right now are kind of waking up and experiencing what is going on, and what they can do. I think we want, you know, we've, we've gone through this before in budget hearings in the past, where we say, "Okay, if you need resources, tell us what those resources are. We'll help you get them," even in a bad budget year. And at the end of the day, if we can't kind of move quickly on this, we've got to think that there's a reason why people don't want to move on this. And I think what you're hearing from this council, this is, this is an extremely high priority for us. We will help you with the resources, but we don't want to hear that you haven't come to us and told us that. So, in the interim time, let us know what those are. Let us know how we can get them to you, and then we can hold this whole process accountable. To shoot for January 31st. And in the meantime, to the billboard companies, I think also it's incumbent that you come to the table and come back with us to discuss this, because what you're seeing out there, you know, not just in the council, but in the communities more importantly, is there is a visceral reaction that is not just a small few people to this new medium. And part of it is the brightness, part of it is the digitized billboards, but part of it also, I think, is the changing aspect of it. There's not movement internally in it, but that change between one static board and another is something that all of our eyes, of course, go to. It's one of the reasons these are probably more profitable, to be able to put four or five ads in a period that you would normally only see one. But at the same time, I think there's a responsibility, especially in our residential areas, to see what we can do to get our hands around this. So, I, I really plead with both our city attorney and our Department of Building and Safety to be as creative as possible, to be as timely as possible. If that means there's other projects that have to be put to the side, we'll, we'll give you that permission if that's other things you're working on for this council. We'll, we'll coordinate that with us. But please, also, one last thing. I know that Building Safety did go out in Echo Park and look at Echo Park Avenue, where there was a series of billboards, some of which were illegal. Is it my understanding now that two of those billboards that were found to be illegal have been taken down? Do you know the, the status of that?
We wrote orders on those that are illegal.
So, the orders have been written now?
Yes.
And so, so those should be taken down by those companies?
We will continue with our enforcement. If necessary, we will refer the case to the city attorney for criminal prostitution.
Okay. And, you know, we're, we're, we have that clearly in place, where we have illegal ones that have been given that notice. If we are having noncompliance, we would like to coordinate with you and see whether or not that should be referred to, and whether we can send that loud signal that this is, that we, we, we mean business about this. We mean that people should play by the rules. If we're both supposed to play by these rules that have been negotiated, that's a two-way street, that we can't just be seeing conversions happening when there's no takedowns. We can't just see conversions happening when there's still a lot of illegal billboards that are out there. That, that was part of what the negotiation was supposed to be about. And in fact, you know, it's just as was said by somebody in the public, you know, fool me once, shame, shame on you. Fool me twice, shame on me. We're not going to get to the place where we see that happening, where we've given up even more, and not even gotten the basics of what was agreed to in the initial agreement. So, I look forward to hearing back the answers on this motion. I think our Chair of Plum as well for his assistance on this, and we look forward to trying to return that balance back to the neighborhoods. Thank you.
Mr. Alakon, Mr. Rosendale, Mr. Labonge. Mr. Alakon.
I'm a little confused by this discussion. These things generate a lot of money, don't they? Hello?
I assume they do. I mean, billboard companies are putting them up for a reason. I'm sure they generate a fair amount of revenue for those companies.
A fair amount?
Yeah.
They generate a lot of revenue?
Yeah, that's my guess as well.
We have staff saying that they can't do the enforcement. Wouldn't it be incumbent for us to include the fee for the servicing of, of this, the regulating into the cost of, of a billboard? Can we calculate how much it costs?
Councilmember Alakon, that's exactly what I believe Building and Safety has been working on with the assistance of the CAO and support of our offices as well.
So, but, you know, come on. I, I worked in this bureaucracy. Priority number one is to find cash to expand our resources. What takes so long?
We, we are working on it, on developing the fee, arriving at the fee, and being able to justify the fee as fast as we can, you know? We're more anxious...
What does that mean? I mean, it shouldn't take more than a week. Any administrative analyst could figure this one out.
Unfortunately, it has taken more than a week.
Maybe you should assign it to an administrative analyst, instead of some, somebody else spinning around. This, this is ridiculous. It doesn't take, how long does it take you to do the budget for the year?
It has taken considerably longer because we have to provide all of the documentation. Again, in the event that we have a lawsuit, we will be prepared.
If you want to, if you want to calculate an exact cost recovery amount, there might be some debate. But at this point, let's take 50%. Let's take a round figure so that we could get somebody out into the field to manage this thing. I mean, do we know that they, they should be able to pay for one body to, to be full-time out there forever? Is it, is it fair enough to say that we could do that? That that's within the cost recovery notion?
We are hopeful that the CAO will approve the report before the end of this week so that it can move forward.
So, why are we waiting till January to get a report back?
We just have to go through the process, go into all of the committees, and, and get it approved, to get the ordinance approved. There's 30-day waiting after the ordinance. I'm, I'm accounting for all of that.
Okay, so let me understand this. You have a recommendation to the CAO for cost recovery relative to the regulation of these signs, these billboards?
Yes.
And, and that is coming back by the end of this week?
That is certainly my hope.
And it's going where?
Then it will move to the next step so that it will be...
Well, that's what I'm asking you. What's the next step? Where's it going?
It'll be referred to committee.
Which committee?
The Plum Committee and the Budget and Finance Committee.
Can, I mean, can we get that on the agenda? And I mean, I'm sure...
Of course. I'll waive it. I'll waive it if we have to.
Okay, he's going to waive it. What's the next step?
We'll bring it to council.
We're making progress.
We'll bring it to council.
So, so by next week, we can, or two weeks, we should be able to get this into council?
I will do my part.
Okay, and so, so we need the CAO to get the report out. That's the next step?
Yes.
Okay, and what does your cost recovery budget provide for?
You mean the, the amount?
No, the bodies, you know, how many, how many employees, regulatory employees would that pay for?
It provides for a, a three-year-long program, which will have three inspectors, one senior inspector, and clerical support.
Well, that's the other thing. Why would this be a lone program as opposed to a permanent?
It is a triannual program. It, the goal is that the first round of surveys and inspections will take three years to do the complete citywide survey.
Mr. Alakon, your time.
Thank you.
Mr. Weiss, Mr. Rosendale, Mr. Labonge.
Mr. Weiss is here.
Call the question.
Call the question. Take a vote on call the question. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Question's called.
And that matters now before council.
Take a vote on the matter then. That matters now before, Ms. Allen Clerk. Can you please inform the council? On the item.
And, and the report is now before council with the amendment of Mr. Reyes.
And there was an amendment by Mr. Reyes, so it's all before us now. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Matter passes. Thank you. Fourth with on that? We lost a quorum. 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6. Okay, we have lost the quorum. Items that are remaining will carry over to Friday. This concludes the meeting of the LA City Council for Wednesday. I'd like to introduce, before we depart, Mr. Steve Court, Stephen Court, and Mr. Jay Rancow, who are doing a day with the councilmen today here in the city council chambers. Thank you all, and we'll be back on Friday. Good afternoon.
Krishan Farley, she's leaving my office with her husband, a pastor, to open a church in San Bernardino. Krishan, come up here. Give her a big hand there.
Yeah, give her a hand as we're leaving council.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.